We're ready.
We're ready. Hold on. Am I ready? Okay. Had to get my cue here.
Uh-oh. We're open.
Okay. We just readjourned from our special council closed meeting and I'll ask the city attorney to make a report.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Council's in closed session this evening on three items: conference of legal counsel, anticipated litigation, conferences for legal counsel, existing litigation, City of Galt versus Boys and Girls Club of Galt, and public employee performance evaluation, and there was no reportable action under either of these three items.
Thank you, Ms. Rivera.
Hi.
We will now open the regular Galt City Council meeting, 7:00 PM, July the 7th. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Payne, here.
Claire, here.
Payne, here.
Here.
Malton.
Here.
I'd ask everyone to rise for a silent prayer and please remain standing for the flag to lit-
The flag to weaken.
To the side of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could have the video statement, please.
This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast and Shore West Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.saxmetrocable.tv this Friday and Saturday mornings at 9:00 AM. I'm going to repeat that. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at www.cigalt.ca.us. A VHS copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record.
Thank you. First item is agenda approval additions and/or deletions. Do we have any?
If I could pull D8, please.
D8?
I would like to pull item D1 to be brought back at the next meeting, please.
D1. Move to next council meeting.
I'd like to pull item E2 to be brought back to a future meeting. And I would also like to table item I2 to the next regular meeting in July.
I2.
Is I2 the Habitat?
Yes, it is.
Why are we tabling it?
Because there was no staff report attached to the agenda item and I think it'd be irresponsible for the city council to take any action on this tonight without giving the public an opportunity to read any attached documents.
I think we're getting a verbal presentation.
That's what I was under the impression of.
I still think it's important that the community be able to look at the staff report before the night of the meeting.
Well, they're going to get the same staff report we're going to get.
Well, we got letters in the mail, letters in our mailbox, Councilman Claire, that the community at large does not have access to. So in tabling this agenda item, I would like to see those letters attached to the agenda for the next meeting in July.
It's my thought that this is an information type of a item.
Yeah, I'd still like to hear staff's report. I'd like everybody to hear staff's report.
As long as the council intends to not provide any direction to staff tonight, then I'd be fine with your recommendation. But if the intent of the council is to provide direction to staff, my objection still stands.
Okay, so noted.
Pleasure, council.
I think-
I'd like to hear the report.
I would also, and I think we have to hear the information before we make any decisions.
So are you indicating that you intend to give direction?
No, I want to hear the information and have the option.
So, I just want to be clear. So we're going to hear it for informational purposes, but there'll be no direction at this point?
I'm not committing to that, no.
You're not committing to that?
I mean, I would like to hear what we have to hear and then make that decision.
Well, then what I'm hearing then is, let me just be honest about it from my perspective, simply this is, this was put on, I find rather suspicious it was put on when it was. I also find even more suspicious the fact that it's in the back of the agenda, that it won't be heard until late in the evening. So if you, you know, obviously you have the votes to move forward with it, but if you're going to do it, I'd ask you move it up, move the item up for discussion, if that's what you're going to do. I mean, I would prefer we put it off, but as Angie indicated, but if you're going to push with it, I would ask that you move that up so that we can review it for the general public to see in here.
I don't have a problem with that, moving it up.
I just want to remind council that a few years ago, when we had our budget hearing and the budget was only available on the website 48 hours before the meeting, the same group that's involved in the presentation tonight, Protecting Galt's Future, was very adamant about the fact that the information should have been made available to the public much sooner so that the public had the due diligence and the ability to investigate the budget. And I would only ask that those same principles be applied tonight. But if that's not the direction of the council, then I'm fine.
Okay. Well, you guys forced me to make a decision and that's okay with me. I want to hear what the staff's report is. If it's your pleasure to move it up forward, then we can do that, too.
Before we get started, though, can somebody tell me who placed it on the agenda?
Well, it says Kurt Champion.
Kurt, did you place this on the agenda?
No, I did not.
When we're- I'm trying to figure out why we don't have a staff report in the agenda packet. Did we not know that this was coming until the last minute?
We had had some conversations recently with a number of individuals, questions about the HCP. Kurt had had, the documents had recently been released to the public. They're available on the website now where people can go and we've been receiving questions from developers, community members about what is this HCP? How does it affect the city? How does it affect developers in and outside the city? So we thought it would be important to provide the council with at least a verbal update on what the HCP is, where it's going, what the process is, how it does affect development properties within and outside the City of Galt. And that was the intent of putting the item on the agenda, was really just a verbal update report to the council on the HCP. Several months ago, four or five months ago, an attorney representing the county working through the HCP made a presentation to the council on the HCP. It's been a while. Like I said, the documents are now released. We thought it would be important to provide the council with an update on the process. You know, one of my objections and one of my concerns over the last couple of years is simply being, is getting information in a timely manner for us to review. I think I would like to have at least had the opportunity to have read the staff's report in its detail before we had this meeting and your presentation, therefore I could have prepared any questions I would have.
Well, the original staff report was supposed to be a report only to get council asked, so we put the thing on so that there was some action, they could take action.
I just find it suspicious and inappropriate to have been handled this way.
Just for the community's information, one of the letters that we received on the city council had requested that the city update its sphere of influence to include an additional 800 acres of land. So that is quite possible, a decision that could be made by the council tonight under this agenda item without any warning at all for the community, and I really think it's inappropriate.
I think we all know what its plan is, so we know where we're going with this. I think it's already been decided, so it's just a matter of going through the process. No, it's supposed to-
We're not taking questions from the audience, just hold on, please. Okay, well, we're going to get, okay, direction is, we're going to move it, we're going to get, you're going to give us an executive summary, right?
Correct.
I'm not trying to throw you under the bus here, but you're just going to summarize-
That was kind of my understanding, just a brief history and where we are today.
All right. I guess the next decision we need to make is, are we going to leave it where it is on the agenda item or do you want to push to move it forward? Because I have an item that we have several individuals out here that are waiting for special presentation, and I'd like them to do that.
Fine.
You want to leave where it is?
I'd still like to hear who placed it on the agenda, Kurt. It didn't sound like it was you, so I'm curious to know, where did your direction come from, if not you? The city manager's office requested it be placed on the agenda or not be at the council.
Somebody had to have contacted the city manager's office and asked if this could be put on the agenda.
This is not something I would expect the city manager to physically place on. It's in mind that the agenda item has nothing to do with the sphere of influence that's been discussed tonight. This is simply an informational item for the council and the community on what the HCP is, what the status is, what the progress is. The other information has come out subsequent to some of the other information that has been released.
And more than likely, there may be, it may be coming back at another time in the future anyway.
Right, so if that discussion wants to take place, that wasn't the intent of this agenda item tonight.
Okay, well, we'll leave the item where it is placed unless I have objection from other council members. City Attorney, did you want to say something, please?
Mr. Mayor, you're going to entertain a motion for agenda approval. My understanding is what's before the council right now is to take item D1 off the agenda, item D8 on consent. My understanding is that would be taken off or moved for discussion.
Discuss.
So that, D8 would stay on the agenda, but be moved for discussion. E2 would be moved off this agenda to a future item. And then any other additions the council has. So I'd recommend you entertain a motion to that effect.
Okay. Is there a motion on the floor?
So move.
And second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Aye.
No.
Aye. We'll move forward. Okay, next item I have is under, that I have personally, under presentations. I would like to move that if we can so that we have members of the public that are waiting out here before public comment or by at least before we go into the consent agenda items.
So a separate motion to move that forward?
Yes. Character.
Give me a second.
Sorry?
Do you give it a motion? Do you need a second? If you do, I'll second.
Okay. I'll make that into a motion if I need to. It's just a matter of move. Call for the vote.
Aye.
Unless there's any further discussion, hold on.
And you're moving it up before public comment or before-
I would like to have it before public comment unless there were, that's what I was trying to say, sorry, unless there was an objection. Okay. Moving right along. And I'll call for the vote now.
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Okay. Do you want to read that off first? Can you read that item off? Sorry, I think we're there after we jumped around.
Okay, the next item, presentation of awards for respect by the Galt Community of Character Coalition.
Thank you for showing up tonight.
Well, thank you so much for having us here. This is a very special, a special place. I'm Mary Martinez, I'm with the Galt Community of Character Coalition, and I'm here to present awards to five individuals tonight who exemplify the value of respect. We're actually honoring seven individuals, but two were going to be out of town and will honor them at the August 4th meeting. So I'd like to start, again, this is the value of respect, and I'd like to start by calling up Brandon Garcia and Marcus Helm. And I'll start with Brandon. The administration and office staff of Valley Oaks Elementary School would like to take this opportunity to nominate Brandon Garcia for the character trait of respect for his commitment to honoring our school and respecting our flag. Brandon volunteered to arrive at school every morning 30 minutes prior to the start of school to raise our school flag. He takes time after school each day to lower the flag. In addition to respect for the flag, Brandon continues to be a model student in regard to showing respect for others. He is admired by his teachers for being a model student and by his peers for being a respectful classmate. On many occasions, Brandon has shown leadership skills by demonstrating how to treat his peers in a respectful manner and to have empathy for others. Brandon Garcia is an outstanding member of our community, and he was nominated by Annette Lane, principal and the administrative staff of Valley Oaks Elementary School. Congratulations, Brandon. Okay, for Marcus Helm. Again, the administration and office staff of Valley Oaks Elementary School would like to take this opportunity to nominate Marcus Helm for the character trait of respect for his commitment to honoring our school and respecting our flag. While Marcus had been responsible for presenting the flag during the 2007-08 school year, he recently volunteered to raise the flag daily at our school again when another student responsible for doing it was injured. In addition to respect for the flag, Marcus continues to be a model student in regard to showing respect for others. He is admired by his teachers for being a model student and by his peers for being a respectful classmate. On many occasions, Marcus has shown leadership skills in demonstrating how to treat his peers in a respectful manner and have empathy for others. Marcus Helm is an outstanding member of our community, and he was nominated by Annette Lane, principal and the administrative staff of Valley Oaks Elementary School. Congratulations. Our next awardee is Gloria Stemler. Gloria, if you could come forward? Gloria Stemler continuously exemplifies the character trait respect in all she does to bring dignity and respect to less fortunate individuals in our community. Gloria Stemler is a lady who is endless in her accomplishments and achievements, and needless to say, she keeps going on and on and on. Her motto is, "It's not enough to learn a skill for yourself, but you have to use these skills to enhance the lives of others." Her main focus over the years has been to provide self-help programs for women reentering life's mainstream to learn to empower and renew themselves and opening a safe house for women in Galt. In 1992, Jeanne Hopkins and Gloria Stemler started out with a recycling program and collecting pennies. Thirteen years later, in 2005, they had collected over $10,000 and opened up a women's drop-in center named Leheim, which is Hebrew meaning "to life." The motto of Leheim is "Women Helping Women." Some activities Gloria has organized with the help of volunteers include quilting, needlework, sewing, cooking, nutrition, walking, and home and auto repair. Her fundraising activities for our community include quilt raffles, selling hot dogs on weekends, a walk for women, a golf tournament, cracking and selling walnuts, selling T-shirts, gift wrapping books during the Christmas holidays with donations going to Habitat for Humanity. Her accomplishments and projects have included the following: supplying clothing and bedding to the Salvation Army Women's Shelter and bedding for the Lodi House Shelter, and providing 27 quilts made for our local halfway facility. Baby projects is an ongoing activity, knitting and crocheting caps, blankets, and sweaters, tear and hygiene packets put together and given to the homeless and less fortunate throughout the year. Quilts and covers are given to the homeless. Baby clothes are given to pregnant women and quilts made from donated yarn go to the needy, not only in our community but also in Mexico. Clearly, Gloria Stemler is a model of respect for human dignity, and we are all enriched by her example. And she was nominated by Elizabeth Serenchni. The next individual I would invite to come up and to bring his twin son and daughter, if you would care, too. This is Antonio Lara. And also I'd invite Imelda Arvisu, who was one of the individuals who nominated him. Besides everything else he does, he's a great dad. Antonio Lara models the character trait respect on a daily basis for young people and families in the Galt community. As principal of Estrelita High School, Mr. Lara sets high expectations for students to respect themselves and others as they pursue an alternative path to a high school diploma. Mr. Lara also oversees expulsion hearings for students whose behavior has violated education code regulations. When students and parents are brought before the expulsion panel, Mr. Lara maintains a respectful tone that allows students and families to take ownership for behavior, learn from the process, and find solutions so students can be more successful in the future. Mr. Lara's guidance of the expulsion process allows parents to maintain dignity, learn parenting skills, and walk out as winners as we find common solutions. Mr. Lara provides second chances to students who are expelled or face other severe challenges by maintaining a successful after-school diploma program called the Phoenix Program. Students gain self-respect as they complete work and earn credits toward a diploma. Mr. Lara forges respectful relationships with community organizations, including the Galt Police Department and the Gang Task Force. He also participates in fundraising for student scholarships. This school year, he initiated a competitive soccer team program that engaged over 30 at-risk students on a daily basis during the course of the school year. The values of respect, perseverance, and sportsmanship were modeled and taught. Mr. Lara guided Estrelita High School through a highly successful accreditation review from the Western Association of Schools and Colleges this spring. He was named Administrator of the Year for the State of California Continuing Education Association for this school year. This success would not have been possible without his ongoing adherence to and demonstration of respect. That is the hallmark of Antonio Lara's character. The Galt community should be proud to recognize Antonio Lara as an honoree of the 2009 Respect Award, and this was submitted by Imelda Arvisu and also by myself. Okay, and we have one more honoree tonight. Isn't it just fabulous to hear these stories? Isn't it wonderful that we have these individuals in our town that model and exemplify this behavior? Our final honoree for tonight is Darrell Clare. Darrell Clare models the meaning of respect better than anyone I have met. He is a true gentleman. For one thing, I have never heard him make a joke which is disrespectful of any group, women or ethnicities, et cetera. When he is being honored for any of his work or volunteer accomplishments, he seems quick to deflect credit to others, always acknowledging the team with which he worked, even if he was in charge. While he is quite passionate and open about his political opinions, I have never heard him disrespect those who disagree with him. From what I have seen, he brings a class act with him wherever he goes, city council, Rotary, or anything else he puts his hand to. All of this with friendliness, a sense of humor, and an ability to take his work and his causes seriously without taking himself too seriously. We could use more citizens like Darrell Clare. Congratulations. He was nominated by Pastor Mary Sanders.
You know, while they're walking out, I want to personally thank all of the individuals for the dedication that they've done in our community. It takes a lot for what you guys have done. I really appreciate that. And a couple of things about Gloria, she does so many things in our community. She got the share program started and the Meals on Wheels program. I know if any of you have had the opportunity of you were collecting, she was collecting the pennies and, you know, she'd go, "Okay, Randy, where's my bag of pennies?" "Well, I don't have it." "Well, okay, empty your pocket because I know you probably have like five or six pennies," you know, and I'd do it and give her the pennies. So that's how, you know, she's collected that amount of money. So it takes a lot, and I really appreciate everything that you guys have done and the volunteers in our community. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we'll go to, move over to public comment then. Okay. Now we'll move to public comment.
That's the undergovernment code, section 54954.3. Members of the audience may address the council on any item of interest to the public or on any agenda item before or during consideration of the item. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk prior to addressing the council. We request that you state whether you live within the Galt city limits or the county area. A maximum of five minutes is allowed for each speaker. John Swatterback?
John Swatterback, I live in the City of Galt. I'd like to, first thing I'd like to do is clarify one thing. I had somebody ask me a question and the city may not understand, but I think the city does a lot of good things for the citizens of Galt. I think we have good employees. They've always been nice. I think I've said this once before, but they've always been nice to me. When I question staff on anything, I question them because I don't trust council and I don't know how much influence council is having on staff's decisions, on some of the decisions. So with that, I'll get into some more of what I have problems with, but it's not staff. We've lost one Public Works Director. I think he was under pressure from this political machine that we have in Galt, and I don't know how much pressure that staff's under now from that same political machine. We know that three council members, Sheldon, Payne, and Claire, has belonged to this Dick Smith group at one time or another, whether they still do or not, but they're, were part of that political machine, there may still be. And I have some problems with that. And I'll get through in here. In September 2006, council approved expenditure of $400,000 in support of the Boys and Girls Clubs. Councilmembers Claire, Sheldon, and Payne and Malton voted to approve this expenditure. Timmer Boykast alone dissenting vote saying the city has already spent $2 million over the last 20 years on the Boys and Girls Clubs, and Reboit said he was concerned whether the club would remain a stable organization. Council should have implemented a binding contract, one that met certain goals and oversight requirements before transferring any funds. Darrell Clare was leader of that council. I blame that council's incompetence on the problems- I blame that council's incompetence on the problems we have today with that loan or gift. Here's another case for bad judgment by council. South County Spurs is an entity asking for a handout, and their serviced areas include the cities of Galt, Harrell, Elk Grove, South Sacramento, the River Delta areas of Walnut Grove, and Arlington. The state already has numerous assistance programs available. There is welfare, food stamps, medical assistance, state aid, Section 8 housing assistance, and in-home assistance for the elderly. This state has so many assistance programs, it is now no longer able to help the true needs of the people because the system has been abused. We have a welfare office here in Golden Sea Street. I went in to ask them a couple of questions. There must have been twenty people in there. I turned around and left, but I was going to ask a few questions. Mary Lou Parrish said it takes an hour to fill out the form for assistance, but said nothing about verifying the facts of the application. Because of the lack of funds in government, it would be wise for South County service to downsize. Maybe then they will scrutinize their applicants. The fact is, the council needs to address this city's problem, not take on problems that has already financed the straps the state. Andrew Marza said it correctly when he said, "We need to take action now to correct some of the city's finances." Darrell Clare said Andrew dropped a bomb. Well, sometimes you have to drop a bomb to get a person's attention. I would have, it would have been prudent for Darrell Clare to have listened to what Marza had to say. Darrell Clare's prognosis of any situation is always more pronounced when he's playing to a group of people, and that night Clare was playing to the group of city employees and the media. If council continues to manage this city as it has been and ignore the concerns of the citizens, then maybe council should, as Darrell Clare said, limit public comments to three minutes. Because I'm going to be here for five minutes criticizing council because of their ongoing inappropriate political views and inappropriate actions. Darrell Clare and Dick Smith, I'm not sure who's the president of that club, but this political deal has, going to have to stop here in Galt a little bit because it's upsetting me. You know, you have two sides, two different opinions here, three over here and two over here. Let's get together and quit arguing about this stuff. It's begun to be ridiculous.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughterback. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Hey, John, could you do me a favor? Not trying to get into a dialogue or disrespect you, but my last name is Shelton. Several people come up and they say Shelton. Shelton's a little town over by Elk Grove. It's Shelton. Yes, thank you. Thank you, John. Okay, under one, and everything else is under an item. Okay? And we will go for the information consent agenda items. If you will read those, please.
Okay, number one, which was pulled until the next meeting or the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16th, 2009. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, proposed adoption of the ordinance amending Chapter 8.16, Chapter 13.04, and Chapter 14.04 of the Galt Municipal Code pertaining to security deposit requirements for garbage, water, and sewer utilities. Number four, adoption of an ordinance amending Title 21 of the Galt Municipal Code entitled Code Enforcement to Clarify Certain Enforcement Procedures. Number five, adoption of an ordinance repealing Chapter 10.50 of the Galt Municipal Code entitled Trip Reduction Program. Number six, approval of the treasurer's report for the period ending May 2009. Number seven, approval of a McFarland Living History Ranch Heritage Area. Number eight, which was pulled for discussion, is a memorandum of understanding, CVISS Central Region Node, that's Central Valley Information Sharing System. Number eight, appropriation of funds for a GIS upgrade to the Police Communication Center. Number 10, purchase of biosolids equipment for tertiary filtration, UV disinfection, and biosolids improvement projects. And number 11, extension of biosolids off-hauling contracts.
Okay, thank you. And we have the one item pulled. Parker, you had?
I'm sure this is a good project, but we are investing quite a bit of money initially, or some money initially, and then we will be involved in maintenance of it sometime in the future. It talks about terrorist threats, and I would just like a little more information about it. It talks about copping. Are we not already involved in that? I guess I just need a little more explanation of the program from someone.
Okay, this has been developed for the last about sixteen months with the U.S. Attorney's Office. There is no cost. It is grant-funded. So for the two years that we are ushered in waiving the cost of $25,000 through a grant, and $9,000 a year maintenance costs will be paid for by the grant. At the end of two years, we certainly, if we can't come up with the $9,000 or it doesn't suit our needs, we can drop out of the program. But it's a database-sharing program. It's the state-of-the-art in Northern California. We're one of only five areas that are involved in this. It's going to let us find a lot more information on suspects. It ties multiple databases together. It's real state-of-the-art smartphone technology that's available out in the street. We can send suspect photographs to people's PDAs, and all the stuff we've seen on TV actually may actually happen for us. We're really flattered to be part of the, have been awarded the beta site on this, and it's, we did a lot of work. Jim Updegrove, Ken Erickson, and Matt Marko have done a lot of work to get us a place at the table, and it was great to get a grant. We're not paying for any of this. This is just, needs the council's approval to sign the MOU, but there is no cost. At the end of two years, if we don't get the grant renewed, then we can always withdraw.
And Chief, is the scope of work more than just terrorist threat? I mean, that seems to be what the program is called, but I'm hearing that it's really a broader scope than that, and that's kind of what I was hoping you would talk a little bit about.
Yeah, it's from the U.S. Attorney's Office. I mean, a lot of this is in how you use it. From the local police department, I mean, if we put into this database, the bank was robbed by an individual with a certain tattoo on his shoulder, it will search all the other databases in the program, which is all of Southern California, and come up with court records, jail records, any records, and develop suspects for us. As a demonstration, when they showed this, they ran the DC snipers. And it was pretty interesting, because if you remember that case, these folks, the two suspects shot multiple different people and were stopped. They ran all the information to the database, were stopped four times after shootings and at either checkpoints, traffic stops, you know, screening the area as the suspects drove away. Their names were known, but there was no way of pulling all that information together, and this is one of those systems that would do that, that would let you know that, oh, this guy was stopped here, he was also stopped there. It's a fantastic investigative tool. Now, for the U.S. Attorney's Office and the FBI, I imagine that they are going to be looking at it in a different light than local PD is, just looking for, you know, the run-of-the-mill suspects and the crimes that we deal with. But it has that application, because the more agencies that use it, the bigger the database will become.
Chief, on your report on the discussion portion, it talks about an integration and upfront cost of $20,000. Did we have to math, I mean, do we have to provide that at the beginning?
The grant picked it up. It all got waived, as well as the $9,000 annual fee was waived through the grant.
Well, I think it's a great program, and I felt like it needed a little bit of publicity, if you want to put it like that. So unless there is any other discussion or questions regarding it, I would move to approve.
Second. Any further discussion or comments? If none, we'll call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Is there a motion for the remainder of the consent items?
Still move.
Second.
Has been made. Any further comments or questions? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next item.
State Scheduled Matters, Public Hearing, Galt Zoning Ordinance Amendments to Prohibit the Establishment and Operation of Medical Marijuana Dispensaries in All Galt Zoning Districts and Northeast Area Specific Plan Amendments to Delete Zoning Ordinance Text That Is Duplicated in the Plan and Replace It With Text References to the Same Applicable Zoning Ordinance Section.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the audience. The item before you is, has been before you in the past. If you'll recall, in April, the city council held a special meeting to consider an urgency interim ordinance and moratorium. That was approved by the council for a period of 24 days. It was subsequently extended on May 19th. The Planning Commission heard this item at their June 11th meeting, and their staff report is included in your report, which provides a detail of the alternatives that were evaluated in terms of permitting or addressing medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of Galt. At the June 11th meeting, the City, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the attached ordinance, which establishes a permanent prohibition on medical marijuana dispensaries in the city of Galt. There would be the associated amendments to the zoning code as indicated in the attached I don't know how much background the city council wants. You've heard this three times. If you have any other questions, I'll answer them, otherwise I think I'll leave it at that at this point.
Comments or questions from council?
I think we've already had this debate, so just be redundant to do it over again.
Okay. I will open the public hearing. Any comments from members of the public?
Speaker's seat on this item.
Okay.
Did I miss anybody?
Close the public hearing. If there's no other comments from staff or council, is there a motion on the floor?
I move to approve staff's recommendations. Do we need to read each one? Okay.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. No comments? Any comments? None, call for the vote.
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye. Four one. Next item.
Westside Galt Lighting, Landscaping, and Maintenance District, 1990-02. I'm sorry. Public Hearing, Approval of Engineers Report and Levee of Annual Assessments for Fiscal Year 2009-2010.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience, this is one of three items that are very similar. This one first one pertains to the Westside Galt Lighting and Landscape and Maintenance District. We're asking that council conduct a public hearing on the levy of proposed assessments for the Westside Galt Landscaping, Lighting, and Maintenance District for the year 2009-2010. Upon the close of the public hearing, we ask that you approve the engineers' report and then order the levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2009-2010. The Westside District, along with the others, was formed for the annual maintenance of landscape medians, corridors, and screen walls, installation and maintenance of the street lighting facilities, park improvements, and open spaces, and other necessary improvements as outlined in the engineers' report. Properties within the district are divided into benefit zones. Properties receive benefit from a particular improvement or assess for such improvements proportionate to the benefit received. The number of parcels for the Westside District did not change over the last year. The assessments for parcel in this district are fixed pursuant to Prop. 218 and have not changed since the district was first formed. The assessments range from $36 per parcel to $222 per parcel. A typical assessment is $213. At the June 16, 2009 meeting, council approved the noticing of the draft engineers' report. You declared your intent to levy the assessments for the Westside District, and you ordered the public hearing for the consideration of the same as required by the Landscaping Lighting Act of 1972. We are asking that you note that in the final engineers' report, the version you have attached to your packet tonight, the Section 3 expenditures were modified slightly to reflect consistency with the 2009-2010 budget. Approval as submitted is recommended for the actual levying of assessments for the fiscal year upcoming. The assessments to be levied represent revenue in the amount of $173,246. I do want to point out again that the Westside District expenditures have historically exceeded the revenues. Over the last year, staff did reduce costs by 2.2%. The expenditures of $211,000 per the approved budget do exceed the estimated revenues by $30,000 for the upcoming year. However, there is adequate fund balance that carries through positive through the next fiscal year. Staff will endeavor to continue to find ways to reduce the expenditures, but at this rate, we will be looking at needing to do something different in the year 2014. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, and all three of these have an open and closed hearing. I don't know if council would like to wait until we hear from any public court. We do have one speaker. I'll call for the open public meeting. I want to give him, were you going to see Councilman Rehane, if he's still out there? Or would you? It's Rick Walters? Okay, I want to give him the opportunity to speak, if he still wants to. Okay, here he goes. Someone just went out to get you, but they'll know that you came in the other door. That's fine.
Okay. Thank you. My name is Rick Walters, and I live in the city of Galt. I've got a plan for the Westside Lighting and Landscaping District. It's a plan. It's, we got to do something, because what I've been told is the fact that we're going to be running out of money. So we have to do something. So we have to work together to do something. Just raising fees is not, is not a plan. Don't you agree, Darrell?
It may not.
What I want to do is read the benefit zones of the, for the Westside Lighting and Landscaping. Quail Hollow, Fumossi Ranch, Liberty Oaks, Desert Run, Greenwood 1 through 4, Greenwood 5, Creekside 1, Michelle Estates, Vineyards 2, Countryside 1, Carson Coating, Countryside 2, KMS Phase 1, KMS Phase 2, and Carden of Glass. Those are all the benefit zones within the district. What I'm asking the citizens of Galt to do is volunteer their time. I'm asking of the 1,074 people to get 10%, which would probably be about 100 people, to volunteer their time to help with the Westside Lighting and Landscaping. If you see something that needs to be done and you live in that particular area, go over, get a shovel, do what you want. Ask Parks and Rec first to get a shovel, get a hoe, do whatever you want, clean the mess up, and don't call Public Works about it. That's what volunteerism is. Don't complain. This is the time we need people to help. The second part of this is what I'm asking of Parks and Rec. Keep the management costs to Fund 6. Now, if they have forty bushes on a particular section, cut those bushes down to thirty. Less maintenance. You can do that throughout the whole entire area. Use bark where possible. That cuts down maintenance. Take an inventory of the zones and cut back where possible. Ten percent of those, cutting back those entire zones would help 100%. If you trim bushes every five weeks, put it off to every seven weeks. The idea is to move everything out, move everything out, which puts a less burden on the Westside Lighting and Landscaping District maintenance. And then third, I'm asking something of the city council, and that is workers need to pay for their additional costs of health care and retirement benefits instead of passing it along through the Westside Lighting and Landscaping. Health care, okay. The next thing is cutting administration costs by 10% or 5% or 7%. I'm asking you to look into it, because down the road, we're going to run out of money. So we need to do something. We need to work together and do something. And then to cut the public works cost by 10% or 5% or whatever. And then cut the finance cost 10%, 5%, or whatever. We need to do this to get through this thing. And when we can, use the solar technology or any technology that helps us win on this situation. We need to win, not lose. Now, on the engineers' report, I noticed there was a mistake of $1,100. I brought it to the city clerk's office, and evidently they got with you, Mr. Holiday, I guess, and it was changed on there from $5,000 to $6,100. It was a mistake in the wrong way, but it was a mistake nevertheless. It was a mistake in the wrong way, but it was a mistake nevertheless, so I pointed that out to City Hall. Um, the last thing I have to say is heat, light and power. Can anybody in this room explain, that's a, a cost in there. Can anybody explain to me what heat means? Or is it just a frame of, of a bunch of words put together to mean something? Because heat on the Westside Lighting and Landscaping doesn't mean anything to me. I can't figure out what it's for, unless you're paying for the heated pool. No, I'm asking you. I mean, you, you've been doing this for seven years. I'm asking you.
It's a title that our public works director can explain in his budget.
Okay, thank you very much, everybody. God bless.
Thank you, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, Rick. No other public comment? We will close the public hearing. Any comments from council?
Comments, direction, just a question. Greg, can you answer, uh, Mr. Walters' question about that line item? Can you explain what it is?
I'd be happy to. Uh, first let me address his, his, uh, point about the, the, what he calls a mistake. Uh, the engineer's report, the listing of a thousand dollars for that expense was the estimated amount that we had for professional services to pay the consultant to prepare the engineer's report. That was different than what the actual ended expense was. We estimated it at five thousand. The actual expense was sixty-one hundred. What he didn't point out to you was there was an offsetting adjustment made in the professional services contract for landscape maintenance, so the total cost of the district did not change. Total of the two items was exactly the same. We just had it a little bit disproportionate. There's no net impact relative to the assessment. Uh, the line item for heat, light and power is just the nomenclature that we have within our operations and maintenance budget items. It's called heat, light and power. We have the same nomenclature throughout all the various funds. At this individual line item, I don't recall the exact number off the top of my head, six thousand series number, six oh seven three, that we charge those funds to. So we've just carried that same name of that budget line item from the budget into the engineer's report. There is obviously no heat paid for. Uh, this is basically street light maintenance, uh, street light energy, energy for sprinkler timers, lighting, those kind of things.
Thank you. Council, if you go to the audit or if you go to the invoices, it will identify what the specific was for that account. And so if it's, it's kind of generic, but in order to get exactly what it was for you, you'd have to go pull those invoices.
I would just comment that, um, I think everyone on the council appreciates, uh, citizens coming up and, and offering their ideas and their suggestions. Um, I wonder if he had an opportunity to sort of discuss it with, uh, the department heads or send any kind of, um, information to you with his suggestion prior to this council meeting.
Probably works received was a public information request they submitted to clerk's office. There's no other contact with my office.
Counsel, the issue with the, with the first two lighting landscaping districts, been there for a long time. What's happened is, is that there's no cost of living factor, and so they've been there for almost fifteen years, so we're trying to do all of the increase on the same amount of money. And the, the, uh, good news, uh, part of it is, is that we've taken a lot of landscaping in-house and saved some money by doing so. Matter of fact, I, and we've tried to discuss what other things that we could do. It was kind of a bold move because I wasn't so certain that we could, and I'll tell you the truth, that we could actually show some savings, but we have, and I think that's a move in, in the right step. But the magnitude of what we're facing, you can't, the, one of the problems is you can't cut the support staff out. It's not going to be any less for, for what we do for that. And, uh, so it, it, there is some minimal things that we can, but the only answer is either to cut back the amount of service that we do or to increase the, the assessment. And so I think what we're saying is that somewhere down the road, if it runs out of money, then we're gonna have to significantly cut back the service. Now, the next, the next district's going to be the same way. Now, the third district, which is a new one, uh, that's happened within the last four or five years, is that we put a inflation factor for cost of living, so that last one doesn't have the same problem that the first two do.
Well, I think the point I was trying to make is we do encourage input from the community and sharing their ideas. Um, uh, we, we don't ignore it. We're always glad to hear from them and hopefully we'll try to consider them and take them into account.
Any other comments from council? If not, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd recommend that you act on these items individually.
Uh, yes, I'm sorry. That's what I was going to do. Thank you. Yeah, this was for the first item. This is for the Westside, uh, Galt Lighting and Landscape Maintenance.
That item, I move staff's recommendation. I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. And for the comments, questions, none? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Pass. Okay. Next item is number three, which is the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District. Staff report.
Yes, in, in just brevity, I will, um, basically say we're doing exactly the same thing for the Northeast Galt Landscape and Lighting District that we just did for the Westside. I will point out some of the severe differences. Um, like Ted said, this one also is, is frozen by Prop. two eighteen. The assessments for this district have not changed over the last year or since inception. They vary between fifty-two dollars and two hundred and twenty-eight dollars per parcel. Hundred and twelve dollars is a typical assessment. The revenues for this district, uh, amount to six hundred and three thousand dollars. They are exceeding the estimated annual expenses of about a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for the upcoming year. There are adequate funds in the fund balance to cover us for fiscal year nine, ten, but we're looking at problems as we get to fiscal year two thousand and eleven.
I will now open the public hearing. Any comments from the public? Members of the audience? There are none? Close the public hearing. Comments from staff? Any questions from council?
No questions.
None? Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll move again that we accept the staff's recommendation.
Motion's been made.
I'll second.
And seconded. Other comments? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Pass. Five out.
Okay. Number four.
Okay.
That's number four?
Yes.
City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District, number three, public hearing, approval of engineer's report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year two thousand nine, two thousand ten.
Okay, this is going to sound like the same thing all over again. Uh, district number three was formed in May of two thousand five, initially for a hundred and sixty-one residential lots in Schmidt Ranch and Creekside two. Uh, has now grown to two hundred and thirty parcels. We've added no additional parcels in two thousand eight or two thousand nine. Uh, these assessments, unlike the other two, are not fixed and they can be adjusted annually for inflation. The original establishment of the district set up a minimum adjustment factor of one point five percent if the consumer price index adjustment is less than one point five percent. So if staff is recommending that we make that adj, uh, that increase in the assessments for not, for the year nine, ten, that assessment will be two hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-two cents per parcel. This is a one point four nine six percent increase. It's just slightly under five percent because the assessor has a new rule. He only does even assessments, so the parcels, assessments had to get rounded down by a penny for everybody. We don't know why he has, doesn't like odd cents, but that's the new rule. Um, for the current year, the, the revenues are seventy-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-three dollars for the district. For the upcoming year, the estimated expenses are ten thousand dollars above that. This, although we do have the adjustments, the costs sometimes lag in the revenues, and so we basically, one year we're over, one year we're over under, uh, but we pretty much balance out over the course of a two-year budget cycle. So there are adequate funds because of the adjustment factor that we have. Um, over the course of the year, the costs have not quite gone down to one point five percent, but the period will catch up to that through the next budget cycle. Again, we're looking to ways to reduce these costs. Uh, the biggest factor in some of these is street lighting. We're looking at ways to do LED street lighting, other things, which may prove to be a significant savings for the districts. That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Will you hold any comments? We will now go to open public hearing. Any comments from the audience? We have no speakers?
Just speakers.
Okay, we will close the public hearing. Uh, ask for any comments or direction from council?
Hi, Greg, yeah, briefly, because I know this is, comes up every year. You know, we have this issue with the landscape and lighting districts. Um, and it seems like every year when we're going over these issues, we've already, we're taking steps each time to reduce the costs and the expenditures to help, uh, address the issue. How, over the last two years, I've been on council, a little more than two years now, how many times, uh, how, how many times have you guys had to adjust, uh, up to this point, the, uh, to adjust the cost of the landscape and lighting districts, would you say?
Well, I've been since two thousand and five. The first two, the northeast area and the west side, have not changed. We cannot change the, that levy.
Right.
District three has gone up a little bit each of the years. It's been up, gone up at least one point five percent. The district, it says it has to go up by at least one point five percent minimum. Uh, top of my head, I'm wanting, last year was somewhere about three, three and a half percent. It goes up based upon the consumer price index. It doesn't, it doesn't have to go up that much, but there is a one point five minimum percent increase.
What would you say the percentage overall, uh, you, from the steps you've taken to help try to reduce the expenses and costs of it, what would you say the percentage is at this point that you've invested i- in a, uh, cost reduction efforts that you've taken?
Remote voice. Probably works handles engineer's report, but the actual budget expenditure is more of a park and rec expenditure. Could you guys help me out with the percent? Um, it's really the, the reduction in going into the, the fund balance.
I'm not sure what the percentage is, but over the last few years, uh, the steps we've taken is taken the irrigation out of the landscape contract, taken the aeration and fertilization out. We've taken, uh, probably about fifteen areas out of the contracts. We've also, uh, started, uh, in, in the, in the middle of the winter, there is no mowing unless we request it, which last year saved us about eighteen thousand. Um, out of the Westside L and L, uh, this last year, the savings from, uh, park staff doing it versus the contracts should be around fifteen thousand. Uh, we're also, uh, with a flail mower that we got from Public Works, able to do a lot of the weed abatement that in the past we'd hired out, which was around fifteen, eighteen thousand per year, that we've saved on this also. So those are the steps we've taken. I'm not sure percentage-wise what that would be, but, uh, I, I, I think we're, we're making some headway. And, and we have more ideas coming up, but we want to see how steps we've taken recently shake out before we, uh, move on with others, other, other things along those lines.
So it feels though, you know, we're reaching that point to where we maybe hit the limit as to how much we can actually cut, it's, uh, before it becomes a little unreasonable?
Well, what's going to happen is, is it, is it, if the cost continues, there's going to come a point to where you're going to have to significantly cut the service back or you're going to have to go to a vote on the first two districts. Now, there's another thing that we're getting by doing stuff in-house that he didn't mention, and that is, is we're actually getting a better product than we used to get with the lighting and landscaping district. A, a perfect example of this is the softball complex. In the last two years, it's looked better than it's looked in the last eight years prior to that. And, and the cost is, there is some, some savings, but we're getting a, a much better product.
You're doing a good job. You really are.
Thank you. I'll pass that on to staff.
I appreciate it.
Okay. Any other comments? Call for the vote? Oh, excuse me, call for the motion. Sorry.
I move to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other comments? None? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Say, next item, ordinances, record, calendar, community development department. Uh, opposition and redevelopment funds being used to balance the state budget. Uh, we, staff report by Kurt Champion.
Thank you, Chris Mayor, members of council. Um, the item before you tonight is, uh, requesting authorization to approve the, there are actually two resolutions. There is a resolution for the city council and a resolution for the redevelopment agency board, um, setting forth the city and the city's redevelopment agencies' opposition to the use of redevelopment funds to fill, um, a gap, um, the structural gap of the state budget to the tune of about one point, uh, one, one point oh five billion dollars over the next two years, or three-year period. Um, the, as you'll recall, the, uh, CRA, California Redevelopment Agency Association was successful in defeating AB thirteen eighty-nine earlier this year. Um, the state has, well, there was a bill, uh, AB eighty, that was, uh, designed to work around what they felt were the unconstitutional issues. CRA still believes it's unconstitutional, uh, to use redevelopment funds for non-redevelopment purposes. Um, the specific proposal on SB eighty was defeated last week, I believe it was Friday, uh, but the, the, the underlying, uh, principles here remain the same, that the city should oppose and the redevelopment agency should oppose the use of redevelopment funds to balance the state's budget. Um, CRA asked that the, uh, staffs of various redevelopment agencies bring the resolutions forward and a sample letter to be sent to various elected officials to be signed by the mayor and acting as the chairman of the redevelopment agency, expressing our opposition to the use of those funds for that purpose. That concludes my report.
Comments or questions from council?
One, one last item. In the resolution, it does indicate that you will be directing the city attorney to assist in legal efforts. If you really wish him to pursue that specifically, we would come back with a budget appropriation. So.
I definitely agree with us supporting the letter. We can consider, I think, if the need is there for our city attorney to engage and, and reconsider if that time any fees would be associated with it tonight, but I'd gladly make a motion that the letters be sent and signed. It, um, just one more attempt to the state to take more funds from local governments and leave us figuring out how to fill their gap. So, um, I, I support the letter and the spirit of it.
Okay, so you're saying item number two is your motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and not number one? Is that what, I just want to make sure I have it.
Right.
Correct?
Yes.
Actually, I think if, excuse me, I think it would be, uh, item number three is what you would authorize of it, is just the letter.
Right.
This report is the same one. The first one authorizes the approval of the resolution unless that was your intent for the re, for the city council. Number two is the approval of the resolution for the redevelopment agency.
I am correct. But don't approve the funds.
Okay. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any further comments or questions? None? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Pass. Five out. Okay. Next item.
South Sacramento County Habitat Conservation Plan.
Kurt, you're up again.
Yes, I, I was asked, uh, last week to provide a verbal report on, you know, generally what the HCP is and, um, where it is, what it means to the city of Galt and, uh, future development within the city of Galt. Um, by way of background, maybe we can just kind of talk about the way development works today, uh, in Sacramento County, city of Galt. If a developer, project opponent, municipality, uh, undertakes a public works project or a development project, and as a result of either where the activity is taking place or the effect on surrounding lands, they may have to mitigate for some type of sensitive species, be, uh, animal or biotic. The, the agency or project proponent developer would then have to negotiate individually with the various regulatory agencies. And that would include the city. The city would have to go through the same process and, and has. The concept, um, of the HCP is to identify, and it has identified forty different species in the area that would be covered under what they call a take permit, whereby, uh, the city could, uh, and individual, uh, development interests could utilize, uh, and participate in the HCP, um, and ultimately pay a fee to obtain the necessary permitting and approvals in order for the project to go forward. The, the benefit of the HCP is that it streamlines that review process, uh, the permitting. Um, a lot, you know, it's not only the individual permitting cost, but a lot of times it's the carry cost on land, uh, that you're holding that for a period of time, maybe a month, possibly as long as a year, while you go through this process. Um, so that eliminates, is an int, and is intended to eliminate many of those, you know, regulatory hurdles that, that cities and the development community would be faced with. The, um, the fee, there is no fee today. It hasn't been identified, so we don't have an idea of what that cost is. Uh, representatives from Sacramento County and various committees are meeting with the regulators to determine, uh, and work out some of the regulatory agreements. Uh, we will have to look at, um, how much land will be set aside. I mean, it is set forth in the plan, at least, um, in preliminary numbers. Um, they will be negotiating through that process, um, which is not complete. It looks as though, uh, they are shooting to a completion date of early 2011. Um, the participating agencies, uh, are Sacramento County, uh, the city of El Crowe, Rancho Cordova, city of Galt, as well as the Sacramento County Water Agency, as well as Sacramento, um, Regional Sanitation. This process started many years ago, I will say maybe ten. In the last several years, it has really ramped up. The city of Galt joined in this process a little over three years ago. Um, there are probably, I'm guessing between a hundred and fifty and two hundred stakeholders, uh, on various committees and, and groups. There are about twelve different sub, subcommittees and, and including the steering committee that, uh, look at individual areas, whether it be the economics, whether it be the mapping, the biotics. Um, so there are many different subcommittees. These people have been working through this process for, like they say, in earnest in the last three to four years. Recently, the, um, Sacramento County released the first sixth prelimin- six preliminary draft, uh, chapters, um, that, excuse me, that is available on the, uh, it's available on the website, Sacramento County HCP. Um, and, and I would highly suggest anybody that's interested in, in, in this process that they go to that website, because it has, uh, a very good, uh, and clear understanding. I'm, I'm not as, uh, familiar with this project as Sacramento County, as it is their project. Um, but they have a very good website and could probably answer most of the questions, uh, that you may have. The notice of preparation for this, uh, for the environmental impact report, as well as the EIS, was released in June of 2008, so they are well into the environmental process, at least the, the background. The permit for this project, uh, is anticipated to be a thirty-year permit. Uh, at the end of thirty years, if we would look at a twenty-year renewal, so hopefully a fifty-year period. The areas that are covered, it's about three hundred and forty thousand acres where they would be looking at lands that could be utilized for preservation. Um, the, the document is voluntary to the extent that, uh, property owners that are in the areas that are identified for preservation, that it would be a voluntary, uh, basis. They could not be forced into it. Eminent domain cannot be used as part of this process. So it is voluntary for those property owners who wish to use or sell their land for mitigation purposes. The areas that are, uh, that would be subject to the HCP are what they call the, uh, UDA or urban development areas. Uh, those are generally the city limits in spheres of influence of the, of the jurisdictions participating, as well as the district boundaries for, say, sanitation district and the water district. Um, that's kind of just a brief overview. I don't know if there's something specific that the council's looking for, or if you have any questions that I might be able to answer.
Greg, I mean, Greg, I'm sorry. Kurt, um, when this first came to the council, uh, this whole plan, I think we all felt like it, it was a good idea.
That's correct.
And I think we still do.
Mm-hmm.
I think, at least on my part, um, I'm wondering what it is that we don't know about, how it could affect the future. And one of the things that you had shared with the council was that there is no amendment process at this time.
That's correct.
Which puts a big question mark as to how that would affect, um, any future plans, you know, in the next thirty years as to what, uh, Galt might, may wanna do in development. That's the biggest, I think that's the biggest concern. It's not knowing the effect it would have on the city or those who own the property, uh, outside the city limits.
I, and, and you're absolutely correct. The amendment process has not been written or drafted at this point. Um, that will take, uh, negotiations with the regulatory agencies to determine what that process is. Um, the legal group that is, and there is a legal group, legal subcommittee, will be addressing and working on that particular subject. Um, that has, uh, great interest to the city of Galt, I agree. Uh, may have interest city of Galt or city of El Crowe, as well as Rancho Cordova. Um, the, in the absence of an amendment process, um, i- i- the, the HCP does not restrict a city or a developer from building, it just simply means that they wouldn't get the benefit of using the HCP for mitigation purposes. They would have to go through the permitting process individually, as it is today.
And could you describe that process as it is today?
Well, it depends on, if, if you say you had, uh, to mitigate for Swenson Hawk on a particular property, and, and that happens very, it's very common down here. Um, you would, i- in the case of the city of Galt, we simply mi- indicate as a condition of approval that they have to find land suitable to provide satisfactory mitigation in accordance with part of the fishing game standards. That usually means that they go out, identify some property, we that, they bring it to us, we then notify fishing game, fishing game will do a look see, does it look like it's gonna work? I mean, is it the same type of, of, uh, of, of topography and, and, uh, or characteristics? Um, and then the ratio would be determined, uh, based on maybe proximity to ne- nest sites for thing.
Right, right.
Um, so that, that is kind of a process, i- and that is what I'm most familiar with in terms of Galt, because Swenson Hawk is very, very common. There would be different, a different process at the federal level for, for, for permits, perhaps, uh, wetlands mitigation, uh, burnpools.
Can I ask a question, Kurt?
Sure.
The mitigation process is designed for properties that have environmental, uh, issues that they have to mitigate.
Right.
I mean, you pretty much explained that right now. In a, a project that is environmentally clean and free of any environmental issues, would they have any concern with mitigation factors?
Well, I don't know what you mean by those two terms, but if, if you have a project that doesn't impact Swenson Hawk in Galt.
Mm-hmm.
Um, or Giant Garter Snake, perhaps, uh, we don't have any burrowing owls, then you wouldn't have any mitigation requirement. And it, and that mo- mostly are, mainly occurs in, in the city on infill projects or infill lots. Uh, you know, you get down to an individual lot, the environmental, uh, uh, benefit of that project is extremely low.
What about when you're looking at expanded areas, like in our general plan update? When a, like, we moved forward with our first annexation request, and there's properties that have mitigation issues that they have to deal with? If one of those projects was environmentally clean, they wouldn't have any mitigation projects?
If they didn't have any, mm, if they didn't have to mitigate for any of the species identified in the HCP.
Then the HCP would be of no issue to that development.
If that makes sense.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We do have, just to remind the council members, I would just remind you, we have about six or seven people that wanna speak. If you still wanna ask questions or comments, or could we, a lot, a lot of times normally we hear from the public.
Just for point of information.
Sure.
There's another way that they can mitigate. There are groups of people that have mitigation banks, for example, Westerveld and Wildlands Inc. Developers can also use them. They can go there and contract with them and, and solve their issue that way. So there's another way that they can do that.
I remember though, there was an issue, I think it was, well, I won't say who it was with, that came before the council, where the mitigation had to be within so many miles of, uh, wherever the, uh, take was or whatever.
Yeah, that's correct.
The impact was, so.
That may, that may be true, but Wa- Wildlands Inc. is on our boundary, so it's, Wildlands Inc. is within the area.
Where is that?
It's just due north of, of our, uh, sewer plant.
Sewer plant?
Okay, before I call, uh, for public comment, I would like for, uh, us council members and staff and the public to, uh, please try to refrain from taking anything personally. And please do not be disrespectful and, we will not be disrespectful to you, and allow you to speak your full five minutes, okay? I would appreciate that. If you have any questions or something that you would like answered, if you would be prepared to submit that to your staff, it'll go over to the city manager and then go to the appropriate person. I hope that's as fair as I can be right at this moment, so everyone could speak, 'cause there's probably about thirty, thirty-five minutes here, depends on if everyone gets up and speaks, okay? I'll ask Liz to call the names, I think she has them in order. Thank you.
Dick Smith?
I didn't set them up. I guess it was first come, first served, so, thank you.
My name's Dick Smith. I've been a resident here of Galt for fifteen years, and I have been heavily involved in, during that fifteen years, in community activities, which many of you know. Mr. Sliederbach, are you still here?
He isn't.
I'd like to ask him to give me a call, because I'd like to sit down and talk to him sometime and let us share different points of view. Before I get into my prepared statement, I'd like to go back to July, or to June 22nd, when I read an article in the newspaper about the Habitat Conservation Plan. Um, I looked through it, read it several times, and I got scared. The first thing that struck me was the fact that here's a government agency that is going to dump on forty or forty-five thousand acres of land to basically prevent people from doing what they want with their own property for about thirty years, unless they go through a very extensive problem of working with the federal government. I resent this, I'm opposed to it, and I, quite frankly, I'm really concerned about what's going on. I have talked to dairy farmers, I have a friend of mine across the street who has been sitting in on these meetings, and there are all these people that have been sitting in on this particular organization, and the dairy farmers are extremely upset with a lot of other people about what's happening here. And it's not just them. It's the fact that people are being faced with a situation where they're going to be told how they can use their own property in the future. I resent this. Any rate, I do remember about two years ago, I think I went to a meeting that was at the police department where they, somebody made a presentation on this, and it didn't sink in to me at all. The problem was that I didn't remember seeing anybody from the city council there, or any city employees or anything, maybe there were. But this thing hit me right between the eyeballs on June 22nd. It's the first time I heard about this whole thing going on. And going back in fact that I understand what's going on in the city, I've been involved heavily. So let me go into my formal presentation. We urge the city manager and council to immediately submit a formal request to the county, the city of Galt's intention to amend the local jurisdiction and South County HCP urban boundary to include all lands north of Twin Cities Road, east of SR 99, north of the new Galt general plan boundary, and Twin Cities Road west of 99, north to Laguna, which includes Delta Greens and the church property. And let me make it very clear, the plan that's under review right now by HCP will move their jurisdiction down right to Twin Cities Road, which eliminates the plans that the city had to go ahead and have maybe a little bit of commercial property. The city needs to protect its ability to control land use in the region, the Galt region, to provide for a secure financial future for the Galt community. Over the last six years, the city of Galt has expanded its jurisdiction, the city of El Crowe, excuse me, has expanded its jurisdiction control of land extending south towards Galt, amounting to about forty-five thousand acres of land. These people understand what's going on, that's why they expanded their sphere. While Galt sat silent and kept in the dark by only SSHCP representative, Kurt Champion, who was our representative, and to my knowledge, she has never conveyed anything of what's going on in this organization. Do you know that after six years, over twenty or fifty-two public hearings and spending over half a million dollars of taxpayers' money, Galt was restricted by lobbyists and Kurt Champion, that resulted in a reduction of the city's sphere of influence by over five hundred acres? Do they intend to jeopardize our city's financial future forever? Tonight, we urge council to approve one of the options that we submitted letters on to earlier. The Delta Greens annexation will eliminate the problem with commercial peninsula along Highway 99 by providing adjacent mixed-use senior residential project. That project can't go ahead, because there won't be enough houses to go ahead and support it. This annexation will permit LAFCO's policy of community sustainability and job housing balance for both sides of Highway 99 corridor. The commercial revenue Galt needs will help reduce the financial burden of the Galt citizens' pocketbook during the tough economic times. Many of you don't know that this project will probably com- bring in approximately one hundred million dollars to our schools in the city over the next ten years. I do not understand what the opposition is to this. Many of our people are having a hard time paying bills and putting food on their table.
Mr. Smith, your five minutes are up.
We're all done.
Thank you for your time.
We need all of the city council to help us, so please do this. And remember.
Thank you, Doug.
We've been aware of this, but we haven't heard anything about it.
Doug Moore?
Mayor Shelton, members of the council, my name is Doug Moore. Pardon me. I'm the vice president of the Lewis Companies in Sacramento, and, uh, with me this evening are the president of our company, Richard Lewis, Bill Mellorup, who works with me in our Sacramento office, uh, and Greg Thatch, who is a land use attorney that, uh, is from Sacramento, that is perhaps one of the most knowledgeable people that, that certainly that I know of with regard to the Sac- South Sacramento HCP. We were invited, uh, some month ago by the property owners of the Delta Greens project to, um, evaluate the property, and if, if feasible, perhaps pursue it as a development project. Uh, we're not here this evening to talk about the merits of development of the property or the merits of our project. We have no project that we've designed, um, no proposal. We simply wanna talk about policy. Uh, the Lewis Companies is one of the largest developers of master plan communities in the state, in the country. Uh, we're an owner of over five million square feet of office and commercial space. Uh, currently, we're in the process of developing over seventy-seven thousand residential units in the state, and I'm gonna yield the balance of my time, um, to, um, Richard Lewis, who I'd like to come, uh, up, and I brought up from Southern California tonight to attend the meeting. Uh, this is a very important item, and, uh, it's a decision that we believe is important, not in terms of development of the property, but in terms of Galt being able to make choices about its future. This is not a decision that you would ma- be making tonight about whether or not to develop any areas north of Twin Cities Road. And, uh, we appreciate your time, and, um, uh, just happy to answer any questions and, uh, throughout the course of the meeting, if you'd like.
Okay, Richard Lewis?
Yep.
Honorable Mayor and Council, uh, I'm Richard Lewis. I'm delighted to be here, and, and we just wanted to tell you that we are excited about the opportunity of developing in your fine city. And, um, as Doug mentioned, I think that tonight's not the time to talk about what we wanna do or, you know, what we're gonna build, but I think it's more a logistical issue, just to make sure that we have the ability to at least submit an application that can get processed. And I'm gonna pass the buck to our attorney, Greg Thatch, who's much better on the detail than I am. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Do I get a full five minutes?
You do.
All right.
I'm resetting it as a.
Thank you. My name is Gregory Thatch, I am an attorney in Sacramento, and it's a pleasure to be before you tonight. It's been a while since I've been in the city of Galt. Um, I'm pleased to represent the Lewis Companies as well. They've, uh, been my client for probably twenty-five years now.
twenty-five years now. We have been involved in many HCPs. They were new when we first got involved with them, they're not so new these days, there are many more across the country. We have written them, we've negotiated them, we have litigated them, and they are very, very difficult documents. As evidenced by this HCP, which I think Kurt mentioned was about ten years, I think it's actually about thirteen, that they have been working on it, and we have been involved during that thirteen-year period. It has waxed and waned over that time. But one thing about HCPs, and make no mistake about it, they draw lines on maps. That's what HCPs do. They identify areas that are eligible for development, and they identify areas that you're going to use broadly for preservation. They do clearly draw lines on maps, and in fact, member jurisdictions such as Galt will need to execute an implementation agreement with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service where you agree to essentially live with those lines that are on a map. And so all of this is a very difficult thing to address when cities begin to look at their growth. How might they grow in the future? Frankly, I think it forces cities to look at potential growth earlier than they might want sometimes, because they have to look now for thirty, fifty years out in terms of those lines on a map. This HCP deals with future growth very clearly, it's only in draft form, but very clearly at this point, with spheres of influence. What this HCP says is that any of the cities that are participating will have coverage for endangered species, will have a take permit for anything that is within its sphere of influence. If it is not within the sphere of influence, it isn't going to be covered. Future determinations on spheres of influence will not automatically be covered as well. So they are the spheres of influence that are in place right now, or are in the pipeline by way of applications, right now. I was asked the question, what does this mean for Delta Greens? That's the question I was asked. And my response is that if you do not include it somehow at this time in this process, I fear that it will be exceedingly difficult for Delta Greens to develop in the future because of those lines on a map. Now, it is true that there will probably be some type of an amendment process down the road. Hasn't been negotiated yet, but typically what the amendment process says is that you have the right to apply for an amendment, and it is totally discretionary with the resource agencies whether they agree that you should be able to go forward. It is my view, and I have given this same view to other people and other jurisdictions and other HCPs, that if you rely upon an amendment process, it's a real gamble, it's a very, very difficult route to go. Right now, the city of Sacramento has an HCP in the Natoma Basin. There is a project there called Greenbrier, and they are trying to amend the HCP. I don't know quite how long they've been at it, but it's been years, and I will tell you that they do not have an amendment, and there is not one on the horizon. I will also tell you, and Mr. Champion is right, you could apply for an individual take permit on any particular project, but that too is going to be a very difficult thing once those lines are drawn on a map. And one of the reasons why is that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service will have to draft findings in order to put this in the federal register and for the federal government to approve it. I can almost guarantee you that those findings will say something like this, that they have struck the perfect balance between development and the environment, and now the species can be saved because this and only this amount of land is eligible for development. So it's a very high bar that you have to cross down the road on either an amendment or an individual permit. So I too am not here to advocate any particular project, my client asked me to share with you my opinion, my advice to my client, and that advice is very clear. If the city intends to grow in this area, I strongly suggest that you amend your sphere of influence application as quickly as possible. If you do not, I think it will pass you by. Thank you.
I have some questions.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I wanted everyone to speak first.
Have you come back and asked my question?
Whatever your pleasure.
Okay.
Let everyone speak, please.
Cliff Lofton?
Thank you. Thanks. That way.
Hello, council, my name's Cliff Lofton. I wasn't going to speak tonight, that's why I didn't wear my Hawaiian shirt that says I'm a concerned citizen. When I saw this South Sacramento County Habitat Conservation Plan, I had no idea what it was, but now I do. It's Delta Greens all over again. I'm not for or against Delta Greens, I don't care if they get built, because most of the people in this room, unless they're in their late thirties or early forties, wouldn't be able to see it anyway unless maybe they build a cemetery out there next to it. I've been in Galt for sixty years, four times longer than Mr. Smith has, and I care about this town. Some of the council people and up there have said they don't want to do anything to slow down getting the sphere of influence gone through. And let me read to you, mostly the reason I'm up here is to get this out to the people that watch this or hear about it. This is from Richard Rodmacher, who is the county planner, and he said, "If you alter this sphere of influence at this late stage of the game, to delay this by several more months if we added the Delta Greens project to the UDDA, and this is not going to be acceptable." That's a quote. "As you're aware, we are already up against a tight timeline. Keep in mind that the analysis to include Elk Grove and Galt's current SOI took over a year and is now complete and in review. Furthermore, we just began the negotiating processes with state and federal regulatory agencies. The public has seen the preliminary draft, which is part, which in part provides a full analysis of Galt's proposed SOI, and the EIR is underway. Amending the HCP to include the Delta Greens project will undo months of rigorous analysis." He also said that, "I don't know where the money would come from to revise the analysis. I would estimate the cost to revise this document to be well over one hundred thousand dollars." And that's my money. I'm a taxpayer. I'm a taxpayer. I don't care where you say this money's coming from, somebody's got to pay for it. It is my feeling we don't have the time at this point to reexamine new growth areas for including into the HCP. If we accept Delta Greens into this, and we do have to accept, do we have to accept the next project, and the next project, and the project after that? He said, "I would also add that the county and the city of Galt have already worked through the issues surrounding Galt's current sphere of influence, and this is reflected in your LAFCO application and acknowledged by LAFCO." So in other words, you've already presented it to LAFCO, and they've accepted it, I guess, as straight up, that's what you guys wanted, and now you're wanting to change it. Adding Delta Greens could raise red flags with the county, causing further delay to the application process. I'm not going to add any more. Like I said, I don't care if Delta Greens gets built, I just don't like them throwing it back in there at this late date, using a different name to try to hide it under the table. If you wanted to bring it back up, you just should have just said it's Delta Greens, you would have had a lot more people here, you probably had standing them only. But that's just my concern as a true concerned citizen of Galt. Thank you.
Rick Walters? Rick? One more time, Rick Walters? There he is, okay.
Rick Walters, now living in the city of Galt, thank you very much. This is short notice, so I'm asking the attorney about the legal aspect of this, of seventy-two hours. This is the first I've ever heard of this, so what's going on here?
The item is properly agendized for discussion.
For discussion, but action?
The council has not proposed any action right now. It is a discussion on the Habitat Conservation Plan, and this is your opportunity to present testimony on that matter if you'd like.
This is, I've got to tell you, this is really stinks. Really stinks at this. Nobody in this town knows about it except the people that are in this room. What are you trying to do? Daryl, you said you would not stop the SOI, you would not stop it, and you're going to stop it with a vote tonight, aren't you?
No, but I'll enjoy when the evening's over, so you'll know that's not the case.
Well, I pretty much-
You seem to be the world's authority on what I want to do.
Well, of course. I've been following you for a long time when you told me if I couldn't afford the sewer water garbage fees-
Wait a minute.
-to move to the county. That's what you told me. That's why I'm here for five years.
We appreciate it.
And thank you very much.
Rick, Daryl, remember I asked you guys to-
Excuse me, excuse me, I apologize. Is there a pre-annexation agreement? I'm asking somebody here. Kurt, can you answer that question?
There's no pre-annexation agreement.
Okay, and then the other thing I want to know, don't you need a pre-annexation agreement to do something with this? Or is this just Delta Greens wanting their way, and the three council members up here are going to push it through? Is this what this means? And the other thing I want to know is what are they picking on you for, Kurt? I mean, I may disagree with everybody here. Lord knows I have. But one thing I can tell you is everybody here is a straight shooter. I may not agree with them all the time, but that's just me. And I don't appreciate it as a citizen in picking on the planning. Shame on you.
Okay, guys, come on.
Now, one thing I want to ask Kurt is, does, if this goes through, does this change the EIR in any way for the population growth and the wastewater treatment plant?
If what goes through?
Well, if they, this habitat, if they include this in the habitat, does this stir up the pot, is what I want to know. Evidently, from reading this, the senior planner up there, the state level, it certainly does.
Do you want me to respond, Mr. Mayor?
No, the guidelines I asked everyone to be respectful to is if you had questions and you got into dialogue, that if you would submit those, and I will send it through channels.
Yes, sir, I understand that, but I think this is the time that we need to bring it out in the open. We don't need to go behind closed doors, it needs to be with the light of day.
Rick, there's no going behind closed doors.
Well-
I asked, and every, I got no response of saying, "No, I don't want to do that." So go ahead with your remainder time, submit the questions.
Here's the thing, I don't have email, so how, were you planning to get this to me so I can take and digest it?
I will send it through the proper channels, which-
Well, no, the regular public I'm asking, how did you plan on doing this? This habitat thing?
I'm not going to get any more dialogue with you, I've already had-
It doesn't work. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Rick. Any other speakers?
I think all the speaker sheets are out.
Hold on. Does he have a speaker sheet? Did you have a speaker sheet, sir? Oh, okay, sorry. I thought you were coming up. Go ahead, Tracy.
Hi, Tracy Gross, city of Galt. Whether I am for Delta Greens or not, I'm a little upset with coming to a meeting and finding out that something looks like an innocent nothing little thing on the agenda, that I look at the agenda online every week and there's nothing to read about what this little thing is here about the South County Habitat Conservation Plan, and then come here and see this memorandum dated yesterday, and this is on the agenda for discussion today. Little shock. There is a law about seventy-two hour public notice, you have not notified the public. Obviously, one side of the, you know, issue's been notified enough to have someone fly in from LA where the rest of the citizens in Galt haven't been notified. So, since we're trying to be a city council that works for the whole city, I urge you all to postpone this and put it out to the public in the proper manner so that people can be here no matter which side they're on, but so that people can know what you are talking about at your council meetings, okay? Thanks.
Thank you.
I did not fill out a speaker form. But I'd be happy to do it, I mustn't swear that I needed to. My name is Michael, Michael Cook, from Hefner Stark Maroy in Sacramento. We represent the Roman Catholic Bishop of the Diocese of Sacramento. The bishop on behalf of the diocese owns about a hundred and eighty acres that is routinely referred to as Catholic Church property, which is adjacent to the Delta Greens property. Mr. Thatch did an excellent job of outlining the issue, and I am nowhere near as expert in HCPs as he is, but we come to the same conclusion in reviewing the South Sacramento HCP and the situation that the Catholic Church property finds itself in, and that is, without a sphere of influence amendment, to designate our property as an urban development area, it will be very, very difficult, if not impossible, to bring that property to some development state. The bishop has owned this property for a long time, has cooperated with the city of Galt throughout that time. This is part of the diocese, the bishop has a mission here, as well as everywhere else in the diocese, and we would ask that you take the actions necessary to preserve your authority and ability to approve development at such time as you believe development is appropriate on our property, and we are very concerned that if you don't take that action at this point, you may preclude yourself from doing that in the future. We've submitted ourselves to the authority of the city of Galt. I was here two years ago and got an answer that I didn't want. We're back now respecting the process. We wish to continue to submit ourselves to your authority. We just ask you to maintain that authority and not preclude your ability to exercise your land use decision-making authority if and when we were to bring a project forward. Similar, I think, to what Mr. Thatch indicated, we just don't want that process to be made any more difficult by failing to take some action now when that action is still available to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have nothing more speaker sheets.
Okay, comments by council?
I'm going to ask Mr. Thatch to come back up.
Okay, Mr. Thatch, come forward.
You had mentioned that HCP will draw lines. Could you describe that a little more?
Sure.
And how that would be enforced, what authority they would have there?
What HCPs do is that they'll take maps, in this case it'll be the entire South County area of this, including Galt, Rachel Cordova, and Elk Grove. It will carve out the existing city limits, and it will also include any SOI in place or any SOI application. And it will identify those on a map, it will very clearly put a line right there, and it will say that everything that is within the city limits and everything that is within the SOI, the existing SOI, or an application for an SOI, will be deemed an urban development area. Simply means it's eligible to develop. Might have to pay mitigation fees and all of that, but it can develop. Everything that is on the other side of the line, however, is deemed eligible for preservation. It is where you go to buy land for mitigation purposes, but you cannot develop that land. It is solely eligible to be used for mitigation. Can continue to be used for farming and such activities, but it cannot be urbanized.
So I guess I'm hearing you say, I know we have several dairies around here, if they are outside the sphere of influence, they could be told that they couldn't develop their land?
Well, no, I think they could continue to use their land for agricultural purposes, I think they could expand their dairy operations.
No, I mean develop it if they wanted-
If they wanted to urbanize that land, if a dairy farmer was on the other side of the line and said, "I want to urbanize my land," I think it's a very difficult-
the line and said, "I wanna urbanize my land," I think it's a very difficult thing to do. I'm not saying it's impossible, um, but I think it'd be a very, very difficult path to walk.
And the other question I had was the timeframe that you're talking about. If you, um, go with the existing process now, where if you have, like, a Swenson Hawk or wetlands on your property, and you have to mitigate for it, um, can you describe why that would be so difficult now with HCP as opposed to in the past?
Well, what you're going to be asked to do, as I mentioned earlier, is execute an implementation agreement. And that implementation agreement will identify your obligations vis a vis this HCP. And what it says is, you won't bring those lands in. You are going to respect the boundaries of the HCP.
Who's gonna require that?
It's going to be an agreement that you're going to sign with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Going-
It's the federal government.
What if we don't want to?
Well, then you won't have the benefits of the HCP. I mean, you could drop out of the HCP. You don't have to, no one is forcing you to be in an HCP. HCPs are wonderful tools. They're very difficult things to negotiate for reasons like this and dozens scores of others. Uh, that's why this one's taken thirteen years so far. They're just very hard things to do. Uh, but you don't have to do them. They are beneficial, because what it really says to a developer that wishes to develop in the City of Galt, or within your sphere of influence area, what it says to that developer is, you do not have to worry about the issue of endangered species, because it has been determined how you will deal with that. You can quantify it, you know what your fee will be, you know that you're going to have to pay money for that mitigation, because ultimately, land has to be acquired and put into permanent conservation easement with endowments and the like. So, all of that will need to be done, but that's what an HCP does, and it does it globally. It gets away from the practice that exists today, where each developer would have to go in, and even the city on an infrastructure project or the like, would have to go in and negotiate this with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and often with the Army Corps of Engineers, if you have wetlands on your property. That's a very, very time-consuming, difficult, and uncertain process.
Like, how many years would you estimate?
Well, I have worked on Section 404 permits that have taken eleven, twelve, fifteen years. I have worked on others that have taken significantly less time. I would say that an average 404 permit is probably going to take you at least a few years, um, to get done, if it's an individual permit.
Like, two or three?
Two or three, at least, but if you have an endangered species overlay on that, and depending on how many endangered species, and remember, these are not just animals, these are plants as well, you know, things like Sacramento orkut grass, which is a very much of an endangered plant in the area, um, it gets harder. The more species you have, the harder it's going to be. So, you have to look at each particular piece of land. Again, what an HCP does is it says, "That's already been pre-negotiated, it's done. This is your fee. We know what it is." Because they are able to make the determination that all of those things that are on the other side of the line, that aren't going to be developed, are going to adequately mitigate for the loss, because they are called, called take permits for a very clear reason. You're going to kill species. That's what happens. Some of these animals, some of these plants, will be killed with the development, and you must mitigate for that.
But I, if I could ask you one last question-
Absolutely.
-what if they decided to put ranchettes out there and stay in the county? You know, not become part of the City of Galt? Could, is that a possibility that-
Well, I think anything's a possibility. Would they have to mitigate under those circumstances? I think it depends entirely on what they do.
I think the, the, the proposal is, anything less than twenty acres is not subject to it, and that, um, those lands would not be identified.
Not subject to mitigation?
Not subject to mandatory participation, so they would probably have to individually.
Yeah, I think if you're talking, it depends on the size of the ranchette. If you're talking about five acre ranchettes, kinda hobby farm things and the like, they're, they're going to be-
Cut off for the size for, for preservation lands to get identified, lands twenty acres. So, anything less than twenty acres.
But I think the question was, what if you go out and want to subdivide it into five acre parcels or something?
Twenty acre piece, I think that could, anything larger than that, I'm not sure. You'd probably be on an individual basis.
I mean, it's, it's, it's possible. And I will say that it is much easier to address these issues if you remain in agriculture, because there is an understanding that there are longstanding agricultural practices that are appropriate and acceptable. And frequently, agriculture is, is very much beneficial to, to these species. Dairy farming, for instance, is very beneficial to vernal pools and wetlands. Um, in fact, mitigation programs typically call for grazing on mitigation land because of the, the benefits of that.
Well, that's my question. My time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for Mr. Thatch, if he had while he's, uh, still up at the podium. Actually, a clarification. Uh, I'm not an expert on HCPs, but what my understanding is, is that, uh, as you indicated, there are benefits to the community from these types of plans. This particular plan is still under formation, it's still under negotiation. One of the key elements that's going to be negotiated over the next couple of years is, in fact, the amendment process.
Uh-huh.
And once that is negotiated, the city will have the opportunity, at the end of the, before it decides to enter into the implementation agreement, to weigh the benefits and the obligations to the community, and at that point, once the plan is fully formed, to decide whether to enter into that implementation agreement. Is that your understanding?
Oh, sure, absolutely. You're not obligated at this point, on any front. You've been a participant in the process. You can choose not to be, or you can choose to sign the agreement when the time comes. That's absolutely true.
I have one other question, or, or maybe I'd like to ask you. You, you indicated that, assuming that the negotiations, uh, as, as the city attorney pointed out, would result in an agreement that would say, "City of Galt, you're not gonna go into this area, uh, that you'll only develop within the UDA," and that the rest of this for preservation lands, because you quote, "met this perfect balance." That perfect balance would mean, in my opinion, and I'm not sure what your, your definition was, that the amount of development within the UDA equaled the amount of lands for preservation outside the UDA?
No, that's not what I meant. What I believe that they will say in their findings, and we don't know, because they're not drafted. All I can tell you is my experience on other HCPs, and how those findings are drafted. They would say that there is an agreement with the jurisdiction or jurisdictions, and that that line has been drawn, and it allows for a certain amount of development to occur. There are two factors, however, on the other side, you only hit on one of them. The one factor is the amount of preservation land that is actually purchased, or conservation easements are acquired, and put into permanent conservation. But the findings will also say that there will be a large amount of land that is also not going to be urbanized, and it will stay in its current agricultural state. And it is that additional land that helps them strike the balance. And it, and I am confident that that's how their findings will be drafted.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming back, huh? Any other comments from council?
Yes, some questions.
Okay.
Kurt? Have the proposed maps been created?
The, the, the Habitat Preservation Maps have been out for several years, at least since we've been involved. This, that's what I knew.
They haven't changed?
No, no. Um, the, the map has not changed, because the map shows the existing sphere of influence. The, the amendment that has been talked about as part of the, the added areas, part of the SOI, as part of the general plan, that is contained within the text of the document, and all of the analysis that was necessary was undertaken some time ago. So, that is, uh, it, it, because it's not part of the SOI, official SOI, but it is recognized because we have that application process, and process.
And how does it treat our park, the parkland we have?
It's outside the UDA, and it would be treated like the, like any other land that's up there. I would have to look and see, the map, I mean, you look at an eight by eleven map of Sacramento County, so it's, it's difficult to-
The one I downloaded took quite a while, just 'cause it does it parcel by parcel.
Yeah.
Um, I would like to ask, if we could, as part of the action tonight, if council supports it, is to get, um, a clear map for all of us in the community, and put it on our, either put it on our website, if that's feasible, or just make sure the link is on our website, so that people can go to the counties. In fact, I would like-
Link the whole thing.
The whole thing, 'cause-
Yeah, just do, link right to the HCP.
All right. Take you right there.
Yep. Um, despite all sorts of accusations that we've heard tonight, and apparently some confusion as to what this is, um, my records date back mostly to 2005. I don't have, I don't know if Kurt, if you recall, but I think it was around 2005 that we decided to join in this effort. Does that sound right? So, as, as we've been told, this began well before us. My records say it began in 1993. Um, the budget as of 2005, in county, was, uh, two million dollars in round numbers. And here we are, sixteen years later, based on this, and still working on it. Um, so, I'm a little surprised at the outrage that after thirteen years, we've asked for an update of where it is. I know some people weren't on the council at the time, um, so perhaps they were unaware that this council has had a variety of updates over the time. As I say, my records show we had quite a bit of activity in July, uh, September. But it obviously is moving towards some sort of conclusion. I'd like to know what it intends to do, um, any final boundaries it's gonna have, especially our parkland. Some of the people who made the comments earlier, I assume they're in one of the rooms listening. I haven't changed what I said before, I'm not intending to slow down our LAFCO or our sphere. Um, so, I know somehow you have a crystal ball, but I don't, as to what I'm thinking, but, and it's not gonna happen tonight. Two councilmen who've made some accusations that this was a done deal, and it was happening tonight, will be disappointed. I think that's not gonna happen either.
I don't think we ever actually made that accusation, Councilman Clare.
Okay.
It may not be tonight, but I just can't expect it's coming.
Surprised or apologetic?
Surprised.
Okay.
Um, but I would like to get updated information. This is gonna be very important to both our community. I do see two dairymen that I see in the audience, and other landowners, um, who obviously have a big interest, whether you're in our city limits or not. As was explained, and, and CECOG has a role in this, um, the Natomas area is probably the, the land that sort of led the charge around here. I don't know when Samuel Keane adopted theirs, but in some of the letters we received in 2005, it was already speaking to that being in effect. Um, I think theirs might've gone back-
It isn't, it isn't.
-2002, I think they may have done theirs.
I'm not sure of the adoption date.
So, I would, would like, um, continued information, and did, did I hear that the gentleman from the county is coming to our community?
Yes.
When is that?
Uh, July twenty-third.
And I would think we want the public to know that, so that they can attend and hear what he has to say about the process.
Is he available just the one day to do that presentation? And we have a meeting, our next council meeting is July, what, the twenty-first, right?
I was gonna make the, see if we couldn't contact him and ask him if they could kind of make a ten-minute presentation and bring him maps, and then if you ask them directly, they might be able to answer any of the questions we had.
Could we see if, could we see if they would be available for our next council meeting?
For the next council meeting? I, I will check. I know, I know the schedule's real busy right now, but I'll, I'll ask it.
And I'm sure he's inundated, and since you brought that up, I mean, you know, as the mayor, I've been doing mayor's forums, and we did a mayor's development forum, which was March nineteenth. And that is for the builders and the developers, and that's a letter invitation only, but we will have one on the twenty-third. And that way, we can have the development industry here, you know? And I think if we could get him, hopefully, I, good idea, I'd like the comments from staff, and from, uh, Councilman Clare, because that way, if we could get him to, get him agendized, you know, and it would be viewed, and the public would be here, and then we could have the developers and the builders here, you know, for another meeting for a forum. I think that would be great. I don't know what that does for his time scheduling, but-
Would that be-
That's my suggestion.
Yeah, would that be more for a question-answer, update in the process, where we are today, where we're going forward, or all that?
I think anything we can get his timeline would be better.
I think the main thing is the map, too.
Okay, okay.
You know, we could put that and have it, you know, aired right on the TV.
Also, something about the amendment process?
I can ask him, I don't know that we have anything, that they have anything-
At all. I have a warning.
At this point, no.
Well, that way, we hear it directly from that end.
Sure. And, and maybe he's got an idea on the timeframe.
Rich?
Yeah.
Uh, don't know, I don't wanna say his last name, 'cause-
Bud Mucker.
Thank you. I was afraid I was gonna say it wrong.
A couple other comments. One of my concerns is, however the plan adopts its final plan as far as mitigation, and the, the incident Barbara referred to, uh, that we went through with Forecast Homes, I specifically remember, I don't think we could get any two agencies to agree on even their policy, let alone implementing the Swenson Hawk mitigation for that program. If you recall, we had multiple input as to what would or wouldn't be allowed, what land could or couldn't be purchased for it. It was the issue of if you could cross a county line to mitigate it, uh, because Samuel Keane County is just right there, um, we just had a lot of things. So, I'd be interested to see how this is going to deal with some of those things. And as Ted said, since that time, we've had the benefit of getting some mitigation land just north of our waste treatment plant, but, and I, I've still got one of the maps that you, you'll never feel to tell from there, but the people who gave me this swore that that's exactly where every Swenson Hawk is nesting in the area. And then, of course, Fish and Games said there is no such thing, and that they don't recognize that, and that was supplied, I think, at the time, by the friends of the Swenson Hawk, who sent me a nice letter about it also. But because this seems to be such a moving target, we just had, two meetings ago, uh, our public works speak about the concern we had of the Swenson Hawk and our C Street interchange, and why we need to do certain things over there, and so we've, we've decided to move ahead and cut down the trees, so that the Swenson Hawks won't be nesting there, because we understand how much that would cost our taxpayers if they were perched where we're trying to build our interchange. So, it's often easy to think this just affects somebody else, but this affects us as much as everybody else. That's why I asked about our, our property there, where we hope to put a park someday. I know the Catholic Church, who I don't remember how long the gentleman said they've owned the property, but I think they got that property when they moved off the last property, we now know as the McGee Training Center, where they had a school, or, or more than a school. I certainly have no problem if the Catholic Church wants to build a church on their property, or a school on their property, or, there's a lot of things they could do with theirs. So, one of the other things I still haven't changed my opinion about is that the City of Galt should have control of the land, that I've talked about many times, and the creek was always a good indication. Many of you heard me say, "One foot or one yard on the other side of the Arnold Road overpass." I've never changed that opinion. We've adopted a general plan and a sphere of influence to move forward, and I haven't changed my opinion about that either. So, these are all areas that I think we should be aware of. Uh, these folks realize as well that they aren't taking authority away from our city, but they're gonna impose certain things that may or may not be a problem to our city's plan for the future. I would also like, if we could get clarity, and maybe when the gentleman's here, this twenty-year option, and how that would be implemented after the thirty-year, because that then makes their plan longer than our general plan, and it would already be in place before any future council would adopt a future general plan. So, it's gonna impose some limitations on that governing board as well. So, a lot of things here that I think it's important that, uh, we on the council and the community be aware of, and I do thank staff for giving us another update on this, and I hope we get another one.
Councilman James?
Yes. Well, where do I begin? First of all, I'm really, I'm really bothered by the fact that the community, citizens of this community, were not given the information, and were not given the opportunity to be here to voice themselves. Uh, I, there's no doubt in my mind, there's a reason for it. It's all about the Delta Green, Green Project, that's all it's about. We wouldn't be having this discussion about HCP if it wasn't about the Delta Green- We wouldn't be having this discussion about HCP if it wasn't about the Delta Greens project. We wouldn't even be here tonight. Is there even anybody here from HCP to respond to some of the comments that have been said? Well, no, there isn't, is there? That's no coincidence either, by, by any means. They're not here because simply there was no notice out there, proper notice out there for them or anyone else in the community to come here and object, or to at least respond to the comments that were being made here. My, my hats off to the Delta Greens party, because you guys have done a good job of keeping those people from being here and speaking. I think it's a sad case when our own citizens don't have a chance to be here and don't get proper notice. And as far as the staff report goes, it was placed in our baskets yesterday, and I personally had to work yesterday, like most of us, and I also had other commitments after work yesterday to meet with people. So, I was given about 15 minutes today to look at the staff report, but yet, we're here today who we may or may not give direction on that issue. I think it's inappropriate. I think this was slipped in there deliberately. It was either slipped in there on the agenda, as a late part of the agenda, so that simply it wouldn't be discussed until late in the evening, so that, as we all know, that most people will have gone home, or have turned off their TV and wouldn't be listening to it. I think that's a very sad case. I hope that it's not our intention to stop supporting the HCP. I think it's very important, because it's still in the developmental process, as it's already been stated, and I think we need to be a participant in that process all the way. I do have a question for you, Kurt, if you would please. The sphere of influence to go in and adjust it at this late date, what would be the cost, and what would be the impact on the general plan? Just a brief statement, if you will.
I, I can't give you a, a cost estimate. I, I would have to-
Would it be in the hundreds of thousands?
Potentially.
Okay.
But again, I, I, without looking at, you know, what specific lands you're talking about, and how it impacts other plans and documents at the city, it would be difficult.
What it would cost is in the hundreds of thousands. Well, if this isn't approved tonight, I'm sure that, you know, the Delta Greens individuals here that speak on behalf of it aren't here, because they don't expect to get this thing passed. They have every intention of having it passed, and they know that. These attorneys, these high-priced attorneys at that, I'm sure, they make a good salary. They're here for a reason, and the people who are paying them have them here for a reason. They have a certain level of expectation, and that's to see this Delta Greens project through. There's no question in my mind. You may not vote on it tonight, but it will come, and I think it's just a matter of time. And whether we agree or disagree with it, and I don't disagree with the project, to be honest with you, I like the project. My issue has always been the location. But that doesn't matter, because the powers that be and the people who pumped all the tens of thousands of dollars into the previous election, and the recall of myself, and Councilman Meredith, in an attempt to control this council, are going to follow through with their attempts to get this project passed through. There's no question about that. I guess there's really not much more I can say. I just, I think it's very disappointing. I think it's not a coincidence that it was slipped on the agenda as it was. And I think it's just a matter of time. I think the public's going to see that this will get approved, even with, with the objections that I myself have placed out there, as well as the citizens, and the fact that we've already passed the general plan. I'll let Mr. Meredith here speak on his thoughts of it.
Kurt, when we were talking about the money associated with possibly amending the SOI or opposing and asking for a separate delineated area in the HCP, I believe it was Mr. Lofton that brought up some figures that he read that I think were in an email from, from the county, is that correct?
That's correct.
Who would cover those costs? I know when, when Mr. Lofton made that statement, I heard someone from the Delta Greens group out in the audience laugh and say, "That's not the case." How would those costs be covered?
I suspect that the county would look through the city or- Excuse me. I suspect that the county would look to either the city, or the city would look to somebody to pay those, those costs. You know, we, we did have to pay, it was a fairly nominal amount at the time, but it was because we were able to take advantage and kind of piggyback on a lot of the work the county had already done.
Okay. I remember we, when we voted on giving authorization for staff to negotiate a pre-annexation agreement with the Delta Greens property, Delta Greens landowners and their representatives had made a statement that there would be no costs incurred at all by the city. And would that be something that would fall into that category? Possibly?
Would what fall into it?
Any, any costs associated with amending the HCP.
Well, that was direction from council. Staff took that to mean, basically, staff time, city attorney costs, meetings and so forth.
We got a letter from you, we were CC'd on June 29th. It was addressed to Mr. Slinkard from JLS Consulting, who represents the Delta Greens property. I'm going to read just a brief little section. It says, "The city council's direction to staff with regard to the city's SOI is that your project is not to delay the city's efforts. Secondly, the council's direction," and this is what I wanted to key in on, "was that there would be no costs incurred by the city, including staff time regarding meetings, or city assistance related to the Delta Greens project. To that end, I sent a letter to you dated June 17th requesting that you deposit the sum of $5,000 with the city in order to cover costs associated with the city attorney, as well as staff time. To date, the citizens of Galt have ponied up $996 of staff time, attorney fees, to deal with the Delta Greens project, yet we've got no $5,000 deposit from the Delta Greens landowners." So, I'm trying to understand if we're deviating from what council directed back when we approved the, the staff time to work on the pre-annexation agreement, or if they just haven't ponied up the money?
They had, there had been several billings before that where they had actually paid the bills relatively quickly. But we discussed internally, staff, city manager's office, myself, and felt that it was time that a, a deposit be placed, so that we weren't always playing catch-up. That is still an outstanding bill to my knowledge, and we felt that $5,000 would not be an unreasonable amount to have on deposit, to be able to charge against, to cover those costs.
Have we got any indication if they're actually going to, to provide the deposit to the city?
They're, they're in the audience, maybe you can ask them.
Mr. Slinkard? Seems the letter was addressed to you.
I got the letter in the mail, I believe, on Thursday or Friday. I did respond with a letter today, Mr. Campion, basically saying that we're prepared to make that deposit when we submit the initial draft of the pre-annexation agreement. And the initiation of doing that was kind of based upon some of the decisions that council makes in terms of, of the boundaries on this issue, of whether or not they are able to even go forward with the project. But in any event, the money, the money will be paid. We're waiting to put the initial deposit in when we submit the draft pre-annexation agreement and start that process, and we're prepared to do that.
So, the citizens of Galt would have to front the money until that, that takes place? Yes, thank you. I had a question also for Ted-
We just got the bill, so, you know, we've got 30 days.
The staff report said, Jason made reference to the fact that this originated out of the city manager's office. And, you know, going through the electronic version of the packet, this isn't even actually included in the electronic version that was provided to council. This was printed on the, on the late revised edition, that was posted publicly and handed out at the city clerk's office. I can't remember any time in the two and a half years that I've been on the city council that the city manager's office has ever started, started to put something on the agenda that did not include a staff report. So, I'm still trying to wrap my hands around why this wasn't something that was provided to council in the packet.
What happened is the original report was a report only. There was no action. There was a request that they're put a, a thing here that if the council wished to take some action, that they could, and that was amended. That's all we intended to do. We didn't intend to put anything else with it.
Who did you receive the request from to, to take action on the item? Because we've heard tonight from, from basically everyone on the council that it was not their intention to take action on this tonight, it was just to get an update on the HCP.
I think there were several requests. I don't think there was just one.
And it originated from members of the council?
I think some went to the clerk's office, and some went to, to our office.
Only reason that I bring that up, it's pretty clear that we're not going to take action on this tonight, and that I'm glad of. But I still firmly believe that the intention was to take action on this item tonight. And the only reason that we won't be taking action is because members of the council have realized that there will be a backlash from the community for taking action without public knowledge and without public notification. So, if, if that's what we're going to do, just accept this as a staff report. I appreciate the work that you've done, Kurt. And I'm, I'm really curious to hear what representatives of the HCP have to say about, about some of these claims made tonight. So, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. What I'd asked staff originally, we discussed, was to see if we can get them on, the gentleman's name, Rich, to do a presentation on the July 21st council meeting. But if that's not available, maybe we can consider having, we have special meetings, you know, periodically, and we just have that one item. This is a thought, because I know that the gentleman, from what you and Jason and Ted have told me, is extremely busy, you know, with doing meetings and such. So, I just wanted to offer that out now.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, instead of you coming back to me, or coming back to us, you know, he's booked, but maybe he's got that window, that way, we give him two options.
I would only ask, though, that the, the meeting be televised. We don't just cram it in on any available night. We make sure that it be able to be televised with metro cable.
Okay. Thank you. Everyone? So... Correction? Do we bring this back, or what are we going to do? Did we need a motion for that, to continue this, or asking Mr. Riddick?
No, there's no, no motion required.
Okay. All right. The next item, please?
Adoption of Sanitary Sewer Management Plan.
The other item we've been waiting for tonight.
Last but not least, the next item for the council is to review and adopt the City of Galt Sanitary Sewer Management Plan. Back in 2006, the State Water Resources Control Board adopted new general waste discharge requirement that was, the goal of this new requirement was to provide uniform regulations.
Greg, why don't you just wait till they leave, okay? I know they're just, they're all talking and going out the door, so we'll wait for the doors. Thank you. Okay, sorry. They were just in a hurry to get out, so, okay.
Happens quite often when I start talking. Anyway, the goal of this new discharge requirement was to provide uniform regulations across California, to provide a consistent approach to preventing sanitary sewer overflows. This rule required all agencies that operated public sanitary sewer systems that are over a mile of pipeline to develop, utilize, and maintain a sanitary sewer management plan. We have prepared this plan. This is what it is. This new SSMP has 11 different elements. Those are listed in the agenda report. Starts off with goals, organizational structure, legal authority, design and performance provisions, what we call a FOG program, fats, oils, and grease, and other relevant information. The goals and organizational structure was approved by the council back in November 2007. That was the first part of what we did. We then enlisted the assistance of HDR Engineering to develop a gap analysis. This was basically a work plan that said where we were at with the regulations and where we had to be. The SSMP must be adopted by the council before August 2nd, 2009, which we're bringing to you tonight. The agenda report contains a summary of the various elements of the SSMP. I won't go into each of those, but there are a few salient points I want to, I want to make sure that we reference. There is an increased education and enforcement program relative to the fats, oils, and grease. We want to keep those out of the sewer system, that's called the FOG program. There is a new requirement for annual TV inspection and citywide cleaning. We've developed a 10-year rotation cycle. Right now, we do this only on cyclic problem areas. This will require additional cost and manpower and equipment in future years. There's a requirement now for an annual pipeline maintenance and repair program. We've updated our annual, our overflow emergency response program. We are currently underway with the sanitary sewer master plan. We also have to implement a program to audit the success of the SSMP, and we need to have a formal amendment every five years. This is going to be a living document. It will change as we find out what's working, what's not working. There is no direct fiscal impact with the recommended action of adopting the SSMP itself. However, there are likely significant future costs associated with following the guidelines that we've included. Most of these are in the area of capital improvements, and in future additional staffing needs in order to keep up with all the maintenance. The gap analysis prepared by HDR indicated our first year cost could be as high as $400,000 for this project. We included a funding amount of $185,000 in last year's budget. We anticipated we'd have to hire some consultants to prepare the program for us. We am very proud to announce we completed it entirely in-house, and we saved the entire $185,000, didn't spend a penny of it, in developing this program. For next year's budget, we originally had $350,000 for a direct SSMP-related task. This was in addition to CIP projects like our lift station improvements and our sewer line replacements. We reduced this to $205,000 as part of the most recent midterm budget project. Another savings of $145,000 over what we initially thought we might have to spend. For the next year, we do have $420,000 worth of CIP projects that are directly related to the requirements of the sanitary sewer management plan. We are working to absorb all the, the additional efforts relative to the maintenance and the TV and the contract within current staffing levels, and anticipate doing so for the next year. Over time, we do anticipate there will be a need for additional staffing. We've included funding for the SSMP in the current budget and all of the CIP. Additional funding requests we brought forward to council on an as-needed basis, either through their, their annual budget process or special appropriations if necessary. And I want to especially thank Aiden Selby, my street superintendent, and Dennis Moniz, my utility superintendent, who teamed up to prepare the document, and did an outstanding job. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Can I answer questions from the council?
Just a couple of quick questions. One of the things I didn't see addressed, and I have to admit, I didn't read that. Is there any plan for security at the water sewer treatment plant? Would that come under the heading of the management plan?
It actually does not. This plan has all to do with the pipelines getting to the plant to prevent spills. The need for security at the plant and other lift structures is, is a separate portion to that. We, we could make it a part of this, but it's not a requirement, or we could do the state.
I think that is something, though, that we've been talking about out there, so I think we will probably be addressing that in the future. The only other question I had was, what happens to the grease from these mobile trucks? We used to call them roach coaches, but there's, there's another name, I'm sure, for those.
Well, I hope that they take that to recycling centers. Unfortunately, what I think a lot of it happens, they dump it down the sewer. A lot of them, they, they go home to wherever they go at night, and they then dump the grease down their cleanout, and unfortunately, then quite often plug the sewer system.
Yeah, and, and we have no control over that.
If we catch them, we certainly do. The new, the fats, oils, and grease program does provide for penalties and citations that can be addressed, but it's kind of hard to figure out where it came from. We, we have targeted certain areas of the city where we constantly have overflows, and we've sent out mailers to a certain select areas. We know there's only so many facilities upstream of a certain manhole that gets plugged. So, we send mailers out to those people, try to educate them, but there's nothing to prevent somebody stopping at midnight, opening a sewer manhole and dumping the contents of their, of their cooking vat.
Okay. That was my couple of questions.
Okay. Any other comments or questions from council?
Yeah, I wanted to touch on, you said $400,000 and $1,000, and that will come from?
The cost of this program will come from the, the current ratepayers. The $400,000 I mentioned was the CIP cost program for the next year as part of the capital improvement program.
And I don't know if Mr. Walters or Mr. Slaughterback are still out there, but if you are, I want you to come on in a minute. The state has passed some new laws- The state has passed some new laws, and the chapters you've quoted in here are both state law and also the authority of the State Water Regional Control Board, who we've had other rate increases of the effect of. We're going to do something that's going to cost $400 and some odd thousand dollars as a result. May be a good idea, but the increased cost is there. Nothing we can do about it. This council can't ignore it. Is that right?
That's correct.
And that cost will get passed on to the ratepayers, and that means the rate will be at least $400 and some odd thousand dollars higher than it is right now. Assuming we can't find something else to eliminate, so.
Actually, that's not entirely true. Right now, the rate that we have set include, at least for the next year, that level of funding. That's in the approved budget. So we've already programmed that as part of the last rate increase anticipation of these costs. We actually gave back $100,000 in the current budget, but there will be an ongoing need-
Each year.
-in future years to maintain that level, where before we had the luxury of, if we got short of cash, we just wouldn't do it. There are new requirements for videotaping and monitoring and cleaning the lines that we have not had before. Those estimate somewhere about $60,000 a year on the 10-year cycle. That would be a new cost that we've not currently undertaken.
So, again, more state laws passed down to local government without a source of funding other than to go to our ratepayers and collect it from them. I hope they recall that. I wish people would talk to their elected officials in the State Water Resource Control Board as these continue to come down. Where do these costs come from? And we have some people in the community who think we just dream it up and like to raise rates.
Any other comments from council? I want to thank you and your staff, and I don't want the gentleman behind you to think he's going to get away with not being recognized, because I understand he helped, you know, a lot in the program. So, Aiden, Selby, thanks.
And if I can, just so the public knows, this plan is 445 pages.
Yeah.
Four hundred and forty-five pages to deal with just this one new item that we got from our friends at the state who can't take care of their own budget and their own matters, but they keep sending things to us to deal with. Four hundred and forty-five pages.
But the one thing you haven't said, Darrell, though, is if we hadn't have done it, then they'd have found it.
Well, I know.
We'd have been paying money one way or another.
Exactly. I suggest you begin lifting and carrying safety procedures for any employee who has to carry this plan around, so we don't have an injury. Is that Aiden?
All right.
All right. He's strong.
Good man. Okay, any other questions? Ask for a motion.
I'm moved that we adopt this sanitary sewer management plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments or questions? None. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 All right. Thank you. Thanks for the hard work. Okay, we will adjourn to the redevelopment agency, and if I could have the roll call, please.
Board members, Hane.
Here.
Hane, Claire.
Here.
Hane.
Here.
Meredith.
Here.
Shelton.
Here. Public comment?
I have no speaker seat.
We have, how many? Four consent agenda items information. Would you read those, please?
Number one, approval of the minutes of the meeting of June 16. Number two, approval of the redevelopment agency warrants. Number three, approval of the treasures report for the period ending May 2009. And number four, approval of the contract for services with Connerly and Associates for continued administration of the Galt Housing Rehabilitation Loan Program for moderate, low, and very low-income owners, occupants, and investors who rent to qualified tenants.
Okay. Is there a motion or any comments?
I could have a comment.
Okay.
Just to make you day.
Thank you.
I had a visit from a Mr. German who lives in one of our mobile home parks, who made the trip especially on crutches to say thank you. I guess he had a toilet that actually fell through the floor, and he was able to get that fixed through our program. And I promised him that I would thank everybody involved, the city, for what they had done for him, because he was very appreciative. Like I said, he came down on crutches, and he said, "I just came to have photos for the City of Galt." So it was probably not a tremendously expensive thing, but it sure meant a lot to this person that the city was there when he really needed them. So to the city and the council members, relaying his thanks and appreciation.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved?
Second.
Moving and seconded. Any further comments? None. Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Next item?
Oh, okay. The next item, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Is the opposition of redevelopment funds being used to balance the state budget?
Yeah, this is the same staff report. I understand that we will send the letter only, and you're not taking an action on the resolutions. Is that correct? The resolution was, was a resolution supporting opposition, but it also authorized the city attorney to engage if the city council provides funds.
Right.
Well, if we can-
Just take the motion as in the general, just restate the same.
Yes, I say if we can approve the resolution but require any approval for funds being spent to come back, then I'm fine with that. That works.
Reconvene?
After we reconvene, if you want to adopt the resolution, we can go back and adopt them.
All right.
With the same understanding. But let's-
Go ahead.
Then I'll move that recommendation on these, and then we can go back and clean up the other ones.
Okay. Sorry, it wasn't clear. Motion's been made.
That was me.
Is there a second?
A second.
Ten seconds. No other comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Now we will adjourn, reconvene back over to city council. And that item number was?
Eight, I-
Number one.
I want. I want.
I want.
So we're going to go back and revisit that, and were we going to amend the original motion? Is that what?
Yeah. I'll just ask council to amend the earlier motion I made to include passing the resolution but requiring any expenditure of attorney fees to come back before council for approval.
Okay. Motion's been made, and is there a second?
Second.
Ten seconds. No other comments, questions? Call for the vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, good. You know, we got that cleaned up. Okay. We're still reconvening to the city council, so city clerk's report.
Yes, my item, local government commission membership. I was asked to bring this back. We've been a member in the past. I'm not sure if we remember last year, to tell you the truth, but, yeah, I believe we were. I forgot to look that up. But I was asking council if they want to join again this year. I attached some information on the local government commission, and council probably knows that that's by the first Thursday dinners, which they actually stopped doing, but I think everybody got notification of that.
Just for the summer.
Yeah, they do that every year. Wasn't it?
They do that every year. They did that last year, too. They'll stop it in the summer because so many, so many member cities had representatives that were gone.
Okay.
My understanding is it picks back up in the fall.
Okay. It is a $600 expenditure, and at this point, we're just asking council, do you want to continue your membership with the local government commission?
I think it's an asset. I think it provides an opportunity to learn and to grow and to share ideas with other council members from other communities, other leaders. I think it's important and a big part of our growing, you know. So I would support it.
They offer training and they offer very much information. And it came to me, you know, whoever the mayor would be for renewal. That's how I knew that what they meant, we were about to expire here, so. I'm sorry, I got to go off.
And we weren't sure if council was getting a benefit from this. I know you're emailing so quickly.
Absolutely. I've gone to those many meetings, and I've benefited from it greatly, so.
They do good work, and they bring in state and national speakers on many topics.
Right. Nonpartisan. It's just fair and balanced information.
Very much so.
There's a lot here consensus to pay the bill so.
That's, yeah.
Got it.
Checking the mail.
Any other?
I think we like it.
I think so. That's good. Just a couple of reminders. Parks and Recreation Commission meeting on July 8 at 7:00 PM here in the council chambers. On July 9, the planning commission meeting will meet at 6:30 here in the council chambers. On July 16, the beautification committee meeting at 3:30 in the city hall community room. And that takes us to our next council meeting on July 21. Thank you.
Comments from council members? Vice Mayor Payne?
One of the things that I'm hoping the new public safety committee can look into. I had two different groups approach me about the need for street lighting in the old parts of Galt where there is no landscape and lighting district. I think both Greg Holliday and myself have looked at some of those areas, and we do recognize that there's not the lighting that we have in the rest of the community. So I would hope that that would be something that your public safety committee would look into, see what the options are for those areas.
Yeah, that's actually one of the things we talked about. We have a meeting coming up on the 22nd, right, Chief?
Okay. I did say that I would bring that to the council. It was Fourth Street, section of Fourth Street, the older part, as well as Wendy Hope, which we talked about before. They hadn't heard anything about any progress. The other thing, I wanted to congratulate Christine Gayle. She won the Comcast Scholarship. Yes. And she's going to be going to Smith College. And finally, I want to say, well, not finally, but what I want to say is, I enjoyed the Galt Festival even though I got drowned in the dunking seat. And I had a few staff members that contributed to the whole thing.
Council didn't get to.
Anyway, we were raising money for the music booster group, but all the people that work on the Galt Festival, I think they did a very good job. It was a great community event, and thank you to all of them. And the other comment I want to make, and I hope it's accepted in the spirit which it is meant, I think that it was a good thing that the developers, whether they're from Delta Greens or from anybody, that brought to our attention a concern that we were not aware of, the impact that HCP might have on our future. I think knowledge is always good. I think we should welcome it. And I think that's what we were trying to do tonight. If there was something that was, that we weren't sure about, I think we would be wrong to ignore it. So I'm offering that in the spirit of, let's do and find out whatever we can to protect the future of our community, whether it's Delta Greens who brought it to our attention. I'd just say thank you to them for doing that, whether they continue or whether they don't.
Okay, before we continue with council, sorry, staff, I over, just jumped right past you. Sorry to interrupt.
Dean Mayor, we had a whole list of things.
Sorry.
Let me just get it down to two. Let me first turn some time over to Greg, and then I have just one item of information.
Just a quick note. We've had numerous complaints over the last week or so about low water pressure. I want council to know that that was partly because we have the industrial water tank, one of the two tanks down, in order to get the arsenic improvements up. They've been up and running now for over a week, making fabulous results. We've actually got the arsenic down to non-detectable limits. So we think that's working well. We're working on the two sites. Tanks back up, pressures are back up. I think we're at least on the backside of getting that project done.
Last week, we met with South County. We met with Mary Lou and Leanne McFadden to discuss where we're at with the CDBG money. We made contact with the CDBG people in the county, and they informed us that our CDBG money can only be used for capital. The reason for this is, is that the county uses operation money, and so we use capital money. So we've asked them to go back in and talk with Mr. Nicoli, see whether or not it's possible for an exchange, if we could use some of our money for some capital, that they could provide some operating money as an exchange. But that's about the last thing we got to where we can use that money. But the staffs did what they were supposed to. They got the answers. We're trying to see if there's not a way to make it work.
Okay. Any other comments from staff? Council member Claire?
Yeah, I want to join and congratulate the Galt Festival on their 50-year and the parade Sunday night. Andrew was the announcer for that, and if I was announcing like he had to, I'd be not able to speak tonight. I'm sure he had to read-
Did a good job.
A lot of stages and stuff. But it was a good turnout, and I was actually surprised, given it was a Sunday evening as late as it was, but we had all streets pretty well covered with people all the way. Voice and Company fireworks, great, again. I don't know how you estimate how many people attended, but in the years I've gone, it seemed like this year's was one of the highest attendance we've had. And I don't know if it was because it was the 50-year or what it was, but we-
I told Voice the same thing.
We had a heck of a turnout.
San Joaquin County, I think, either canceled their fireworks or cut them way back, so.
Did we charge them as they came across the county line? All right. Anyway, it was great. My German Shepherd with his first fireworks. We weren't sure what would happen. He enjoyed him. He didn't seem to even care. I'm a little concerned about his hearing. Couple of things regionally. I first want to start by thanking Congressman Lundgren and his staff, and Pete Eves, as we continue our adventure for federal funding to improve our city. I had a chance to talk to the congressman and his staff last week here in the secondary, and thank them on behalf of all of us for the work they're continuing to do. Just a side note, got to see past presidential candidate Governor Huckabee, who was in the area, and found that interesting, and he even played a little guitar, so that was entertaining as well. But he was actually a very good speaker. There's going to be an event that I'll be representing the area district on, but Secog will be there. Capital Courters and others, this has to do with the train and transportation and, you know, my pet project. So we're trying to stay out there in front of the public. This is for a repowered locomotive and a cleaner burning locomotive for regional transit service, so we're going to be celebrating that. Will Kempson will be there, and various representatives from the state also. So it'll be a nice media event at the Amtrak station on July 22, 10:00 AM. And at Secog, we continue to work on the stimulus funding that's coming through to various programs throughout the region. And I think Mr. Greg had an update as our project moves up the list a little bit. We're still hopeful, but we're up to number four now on the, so we're now in the top bumper. So keep your fingers crossed. Does that funding goes out to other programs? We're hoping there's some more spillover for our city, so. That's it.
I would too. I want to congratulate them on Galt Festival for their 50 years. I think that's outstanding. And hopefully I'll be around in the next 50 years to congratulate them again. God willing. My wife and I, we worked in the fireworks booths for the Galt Historical Society and Friends of the Library. That was a lot of fun. I was able to do a quick tap dance out front and bring in some money. Well worth it. Also, I did a little training up in Shasta County. It's Democracy for America. It's an organization that gives training on campaigns. And so I took an opportunity, paid for it myself, went up there, and it's really, it educates you on how campaigns operate and how you can run a legitimate and good, honest campaign and win. Also, I want to comment on our police, police report on the crimes and that. You know, I really had thought with the heat and everything else that we would have saw a much, a real spike in crime, Lauren, more so than what we're seeing, so I'm pretty impressed that our staff- that our officers are doing such an outstanding job. So my hat's off to them. And that's all I have to report at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Aragon?
Echo the sentiments of the entire council in congratulating the Galt Festival on their 50th year. I had the opportunity to volunteer out there on Friday night. The event seemed like it was very well attended. Hopefully, they made a lot of money to put back into the local nonprofit organizations as they always do. Also, last week, I had the opportunity to testify before the California State Assembly Committee on Jobs and Economic Development and speak about the importance of California getting back into the manufacturing industry and becoming a global power in that aspect again. I think all of us up here have seen what the retail economy has done to the state of California, we simply don't make anything here anymore. And when personal income levels shift, the retail service industry declines and it just has a dramatic impact on our economies. Also, wanted to give an update on the Galt In View concept that we talked about for the website. That would be transparency, it'd be a transparency website that would allow community members to view expenditures as they occur. Going to be meeting with our city manager and our IT coordinator before the next council meeting to coordinate how we're going to make that happen. Also, wanted to give an update on the cast committee. I attended a meeting on July 17th where we talked about the Youth Master Plan. I think there was also a meeting today, or tomorrow morning, I think Barbara will be in attendance, to talk about how we're going to move forward with creating this Youth Master Plan for the city of Galt. I also took a new job, I started on Monday. I'm going to be working as a Business Development Director for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers. Going to have a lot more time to spend lobbying at the state Capitol and talking about our local issues and why it's important for our elected leaders at the Capitol Building to listen to what we have to say. So with that, I'll turn it over to our mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I too had the opportunity, in fact, my whole family, we volunteered in two fireworks booths. One was Friends of the Library and the Historical Society and the others is the Knights of Columbus and the Daughters of Isabella and we had a great time. And it was, what I do like about doing that is you just, you know, there's, I told people, there's no politics, don't ask me about anything, and you know what? They were very good about that, you know, and I really appreciate that. Weather was great, you know, you sat out and just got to talk to people and, you know, like yourself, do some things outside and bring customers in. So it seems like we all kind of enjoy doing that, you know, when we can. I did also have the opportunity to attend Boy Scouts of America Troop 28 and was asked to come in and speak to the scouts regarding good citizenship and volunteering in our community. And I found it very rewarding, instead of having, you know, they don't have any chairs there, so, I mean, you know, they're kind of like folded up. And so what I did is we set up the tables like we would do a big management meeting, okay? So we put like three tables together. I think they expected me to be at the end, while I placed myself on the corner and sat right down with them. And they asked me if I wanted a podium and I said, "No, because I'm talking to the scouts." And I found it very rewarding and reminded me of when I was a scout, you know, but it was very good. I think any one of you would have enjoyed, you know, talking to those kids and learning some things. Hey, the other thing that happened today is, and it was kind of short notice, there's a little bit of an article in the paper, military convoy making cross-country trip to honor the vets. What we had, it started out to be around 3:30 today, it ended up being about 5:00 PM before they arrived. But some 45 historic military vehicles, mostly were Jeeps, drove through town, they came on, they drove on the Liberty, Lincoln, thank you. And I find that, found that very impressive. I was really impressed with, you know, the longer it took, which was kind of a plus because the longer it took for them to arrive and they had some Jeeps break down and, you know, they had to load them and then they got separated. But when I got, first got there, there was only about 20 of us. Well, by the time the convoy came by, where was that where the memorial is, at A and Lincoln, there was about 50 people right at that park. And then if you look down Lincoln, down to C, you would see clumps and groups of people, 10 or 15 here, 25 there. And I understand that people were standing in groups all the way out to Ranch Road and Cost. And I found that that was really great. And it all came to us through an article in the paper, Galt Herald was there and, you know, they've taken a local paper, and I understand they're going to put something in our local paper too. I thought that was very rewarding and maybe a lot of you knew about it, but I mean, they started June the 11th in Washington DC and they're cracking all the way to San Francisco.
Actually, my daughter drove in from Woodbridge and said there were people all the way on Lower Sacramento Road, all the way, yeah.
That's what I heard.
I've encountered them myself. Beautiful, it was great to see, I mean, it was very impressive, they traveled over 3,000 miles, but, you know, they had some old Jeeps, old vehicles, I mean, everybody was dressed in the right attire, it was pretty impressive.
It was, very was. Yeah, I just want to hope that everyone had a happy 4th of July. But, you know, as a person that was in law enforcement, you know, for those of you that fired off bottle rockets, M80s, and actually preloaded motors, mortars as they're called, shame on you. And I'm hoping that nobody got hurt. You're going to get caught, you're going to get hurt, and you're going to get arrested. The facts are the facts. I can only control what is around my neighborhood and walking short distance. And, you know, the teams that we had out could only go to so many things. But, you know, you guys really, people, folks, be smart, don't be stupid, okay? I'm probably going to hear about that, that's my opinion. So, hey, I thank everyone tonight and I thank council and staff for being very professional. Thank you. We will adjourn at, what, 9:56? Wow, okay.
That's the greatest $1 thing out there.
They are pretty good.
I'm going to be great. I didn't even get a paper today. I just put food and water.
You really didn't pay much.
Thank you. Congratulations. Glad to know.
Congratulations. Thank you. 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 Congratulations.